Roger Moore.
Roger Tindrum.
Mike Hay.
Jamie Lowery.
Tom McGinn.
Well, it isn't it.
I've got to do it.
It's badly established, doesn't know how to use it.
No, I didn't know you were going to be on this.
What?
Is everything functioning?
We live? You're ready? Yeah, we're recording, you're online.
On the agenda this evening, approval of the agenda. We have a public hearing. On the public hearing, item one is going to be proposed amendments to the Land Use Ordinance in general, which will encompass definitions, district regulations, residential requirements. Item two, we propose amendments to the Land Use Ordinance Performance Standards, which will include lighting, off-street parking, loading, landscaping, signs, seasonal resources, drive-to-facilities, pet daycare centers. Item three, we propose amendments to the Land Use Ordinance New Districts. It will be Downtown Business District One, Downtown Business Two District, and Townhouse Corner District. Item four, we propose amendments to the Land Use Map, official zoning map, and district descriptions. Item three will be regular meeting. Under that, we propose amendments to the Land Use Ordinance Zoning Map, another business. This time, I'd ask if you have some cell phones or phone type device, would you mind using them all, please? And before we start, we are very fortunate to have our town manager with us this evening, and he may have a couple of comments to make at the onset.
Very fortunate, thank you very much, Roger. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Todd Shea, I'm the town manager of the town of Rundle. Many of you I know, many of you I don't. If I don't know you and you have things to tell me, my office is at Town Hall, and I have an open door policy, I welcome you all to come in and speak to me at any time, as long as I'm married, to 4:30, and then many other hours after that. I want to thank the planning boards for all their hard work that they do for this town and any other boardroom committees that we have here in the town of Rundle, and I welcome people to come and join committees, volunteer, because we have a lot of positions open and we have a lot of available use of the wonderful resources that are possibly sitting in this room that may have interest. The reason I'm here tonight is I had an Economic Development Committee meeting a week ago on Tuesday, where I don't believe I explained properly my position of the process. My job is not to set policy, my job is not to enforce policy. We have people who work for us, who work for me, that enforce the policy. I'm here to make sure that the process goes smoothly and that the policies are enforced properly. At the Economic Development Committee meeting, I think in an emotional moment stated that it was my understanding that the planning board was in favor of doing something a circle way, and that is, how many warrant articles there are in regards to these land use ordinance revisions? The land use ord- and I need to restate what the process is and who is responsible for that. Ultimate decision for how these ordinances go before town meeting lies with the Board of Selectment. The Board of Selectment takes my advice, that's my job, is to guide the Board of Selectment in making a choice that is ultimately their choice, but it is my advice that they take in that process. As the land use ordinances were presented to me, as I saw them, as you'll see in your packets, as you'll see on our website on the homepage, there are several different proposed revisions to the land use ordinances. As I reviewed those, I'm not a pessimist, but what I do in my policy, in my process review, is determine what ifs. What if this warrant article doesn't pass and this one does? What if that warrant article passes and this one does? Not. I determined that, with the recommendation of the town planner, Tad Redway, the way that I saw those land use ordinances that have been worked on by the planning board for over a year now, there was no possible way, as presented, to bring those individually to town meeting as separate warrant articles, because there were too many what ifs. My recommendation after running those what ifs was to recommend to the Board of Selectment, which I did at the Selectments meeting a week ago, Monday, that it be done in a single warrant article. At that point in time, the Board of Selectment agreed with me, that was moved forward to the town meeting, the Town Report Book Warrant, which is the unofficial warrant, but it is something that needs to be published in time for town meeting, so we do that ahead of the official signing of the warrant. From what happens at this meeting, there will be a decision made by the planning board as to whether or not the ordinances as proposed are acceptable to the planning board to forward to the Board of Selectment. Tuesday night, May 27th, the Board of Selectment will meet at 7 o'clock. It is their ultimate decision whether or not they agree with my recommendation to go with a single warrant article. If the Board of Selectment does not agree with that recommendation, next week I will go back, Tad and I will revise the ordinances to try to make them so that if they stand alone and any individual item does not pass, it does not affect the remainder of the warrant articles that are on the warrant. Tad and I will rewrite what we have, recompile what we have. I'm requesting on Tuesday night that the Board of Selectment schedule a meeting for June 1st, which is the last possible time that we can have that meeting, because between now and Tuesday, we don't have time to rewrite these ordinances and recompile these ordinances. So, the ultimate decision to forward that to the Board of Selectment landed on my desk. If people are unhappy with that decision, I recommend that you come to my office, and no one else's, and express your displeasure if that is what it may be. I don't direct policy, I don't tell the planning board how to make their ordinances, I don't tell them what to put in their ordinances. But in my opinion, the ultimate decision on all of the work that the planning board has done, if it passes muster this evening, the ultimate decision lies in the legislative body of the town of Rundle, which is each and every resident that shows up at town meeting to make that decision. I wanted to clarify that, to make sure that there was no misunderstanding as to who made that ultimate decision to put it in a single warrant article, and that's why it was done. I want to thank you for your time, and I want to let the planning board and Tad get on with their meeting. If you have any questions, you know where my office is, my number is right at Town Hall. I would also encourage you to go to our website, sign up for our email notice alerts, right on the homepage of our website, you click on a link, you put in your email address, you'll get an email that you need to confirm that you received that email address, and any agendas, any happenings, any alerts that go on in town, you will receive an automatic email. Thank you very much, and good luck this evening.
I do have more copies printed, so if there's any that's on here, but...
We need a motion from the Board to approve the agenda as printed, is that what else we need to add to it at this time?
I second that, yeah.
I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Redway, town planner, to get it started. I'd also ask, if you have a question or a comment, you stand to be recognized, and the same thing with the members of the Board, we'll try to keep this as orderly as possible.
And also, please, for the secretary's benefit, state your name and your address, so she can record that, or at least your name, so she can record that in a minute. Thank you. Essentially, tonight, we have a whole bunch of different things, as you can see on your agenda, and you have your handouts, I have them up on the whiteboard, if you need to go over any of them. Let me start from the beginning in saying that one of the key things in any zoning ordinance are definitions. What is what? What is a lot? What is agriculture? What is a number of different things? Zoning ordinance needs to have accurate definitions, so people, landowners, know what uses they can use, and what the plan is, and different kinds of activities they can do on their property are, and how they are considered in the zoning ordinance. One of the things, the comp plan, 2007 comp plan, and the upcoming 2014 comp plan, it emphasized that we have a better range of definitions to discuss various uses that are employed in the zoning ordinance, and give a much better definition, so obviously, both the planning board and applicants and property owners are on the same page. And these definitions run through a wide variety of different kinds of uses and activities. Some of these are existing, in other words, we've had references to them in the past, but we have never defined them, or have not defined them in accordance with new policy. Ones, and if you look through there, the ones that are underlined, anything that's underlined is a brand-new text. Anything that struck out, or anything that has just a partial underline, like agriculture here, for instance, and it refers to, as you can see, the addition here is "or cultivation of medical marijuana," that's an addition. Anything that struck out, like you'll see "or" here, anything that struck out is proposed to be deleted from the text, and that will be the case all through these documents. Strikeouts are proposed deletions, underlines are proposed additions. When you see a completely underlined definition, or any section in here, you'll assume that this is a brand-new definition. And we have used everything from age-restricted communities, which we currently actually have in our ordinance, but is not defined appropriately, certainly not defined in reference to the Federal Older Persons Act, 65, or the Fair Housing Act. We've made this definition comply to the requirements of the federal CFRs and the codes to ensure that when we use this, that we're in compliance with federal and state law as well. We have things like animated signs, banquet halls, which we've never defined at all. You'll see a lot of new uses that are in these definitions, and part of the reason is that our current zoning ordinance is crafted around loose definitions, and then it leaves the code enforcement officer the responsibility of figuring out whether what you want to do on your property fits into a certain pigeonhole. So, that leaves a lot of latitude to the CEO, to the code enforcement officer, and a lot of ambiguity. The intent of these definitions is also to nail down some of these uses and make it very clear, to eliminate ambiguity, and to create some very distinct parameters, so property owners know what they can do, and developers can know what they do, and private citizens can know what they do, what each one of these things really means. So, I don't think I could go through all of these, and I'm sure you don't want me to go through all of these, but does anybody have any questions or any comments on any of these particular definitions?
I'd be honored to, before I, I'll open a public hearing at this time at 7:24, and we'll go paralogically, we'll start with the first item, which was definitions. If anybody has comments or questions on definitions, please do so.
Phil Nice from 84 on Kevin Road. Don't you think this tool is a little bit much to present at this meeting without the residents having a chance to peruse it and think about all those facts that are in here? I mean, these guys have been working on it for over a year.
Yes.
And I'm sure they understand, you know, everything that's in this, and it's in their best judgment, but us as residents, this is the first time I've seen this thing. I know it was published on May 1st, but on paper, on the website, where?
It's been on the website.
And it's been available in the town office for at least a week, if not longer, maybe 10 days, I'd say.
Look, how many people, how many people in the audience have thought, "Happened, got a copy of this within the last minute or two?" I don't mind discussing the features that you have here, but I don't think we can vote on these as concrete tonight without, you know, the membership of the town of Rundle having a chance to really peruse these and see what they like and what they don't like.
I agree with you 100%, but we're not, just to point out, we're not voting on this town. This is a public hearing, you hear residents' comments, the actual voting won't occur until June 11th at the town meeting.
Selectment, select meeting?
No, it's the town meeting. None of these ordinances can go through without you folks voting for them. Now, this is what the planning board does, and this is what staff does. If the townspeople don't want these things, then you vote against them, and they don't go through.
I have one more question, that's sort of related to the definitions, but I took the notice in my mailbox, and I have a question, is where did the concept of Town House Corner District zoning come from?
Okay, well, you want to be getting to that, sir? That's going to be in the item three proposal, Town House Corner District, explain that to me.
I'll give you a full rundown on the history of that.
Very good, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yes. Thank you, it's Tommy Walker. I have on definitions tonight, my due diligence, but I do have, I have a few questions. Under agriculture, could you explain to me why the cultivation of medical marijuana is excluded from areas, and because it's included someplace else?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want to be sure. Under age-restricted community?
Yes.
Residential development that design, I think you missed another word.
But, Dolly, I think she's right.
Okay.
Is, is...
Sorry, but at least you know I read it, right?
Yes, I do, thank you. Apparently, I didn't.
Also, probably about the third sentence, under age-restricted community, it says "all residential types except mobile homes." Is that because there's some kind of special state law about age-restricted not including mobile homes?
No, it's because we're reusing the term "age-restricted community" in this situation, it's in places outside of our mobile home overlay district.
Okay, thank you. I'm still going, I have two more, I just have to find my notes. Under medical facilities, on page, page 3, middle of the page, it discusses all kinds of clinics, mostly homes, but I'm a little concerned because it doesn't specifically address methadone clinics.
No, it does not.
Which, to me, would imply that they would be allowed, which is a little concerning, not sure that I want to allow methadone clinics, but... Then on page, please, on page, page 4, third one down, powered sports facility?
Yes.
Is this just a generic description of a powered sports facility?
Yes, it's to make a distinction in recreational types or amusement parks, between those kinds of facilities that have go-karts, ATV tracks, dirt bike tracks, and any other kind of recreational facility, it's a subdivision of recreational facility.
Okay, and then my last comment, under signs, sandwich board, it says "a free sanding portable sign, two faces, two feet by three feet." It says the spaces have to consist to be the black chalkboard, dark reader board, with lighter removable lettering or permanent sign design. Why is it that they couldn't have a white, why is it, this one, why is it that you're not allowing a white free sanding sandwich board?
I figure what...
It seems a little restrictive.
Well, first of all, it's actually opening up an opportunity, because right now, sandwich boards aren't permitted in our zoning ordinance.
Well, I understand that, but if you're going to open it up, I don't understand why it was restricted to just black.
Well, I think, first of all, it was a dark, not just black, the black chalkboards, because black chalkboards, which are used more and more, increasing, with increasing frequency, because they're so easy to change, you use basically sidewalk chalk on them, people are doing, can make specials, put out their specials very quickly, and use it for all sorts of, can use it artistically, and then the dark, the light on dark is a standard on our zoning ordinance now for any kind of movable lettering sign. That's the standard we have right now. So, we're keeping with that same standard, rather than deviating from that standard that currently exists.
I will say, I don't agree with that, because I think a lot of places now are using the white dry erase double-sided board, so that the expense of having to change a lettering or buy a lettering, or have people steal the lettering, as what happens in some cases. And I understand that you might have dark reading or dark signs in different areas, but if you were going to open up the sandwich board issue, I think yet it would have behooved us to have, allow dry erase, double-sided, white, for people to be able to put their signs and be able to erase them, and not have to worry about wearing or changing lettering or that. Thank you.
Yes? Hi, Mark Smith at H. Purple Farm. I think you have three minutes left, maybe a couple punchlines, but on the agricultural, is that food animal husbandry is a legal thing?
No, it does not, animal husbandry is separate.
That's a different definition?
Yes, that's a different definition.
That's one in this package here?
Then, nothing's being changed, it currently exists.
Was that good or bad?
Well, I think it's good, unless you don't want to have animal husbandry.
I'm taking it away.
No, we're not making any changes in this round on anything with animal husbands.
So, I don't pick a home swap, anything like that.
And you're not suddenly now out of business, because we don't allow animal husbands.
Any other comment, questions, members of the Board? Okay, we move now to 6.2, district regulations.
This is housecleaning stuff, is basically what's happening in this, is, one of the things about our zoning ordinance is that there's many references sprinkled throughout the existing format of the zoning ordinance, to districts, to uses, and what we have to do when we're making changes to a district, or changing the names, or creating new districts, is we have to hunt through the ordinance and find references to the old districts, eliminate them, and plug in the new districts. And this is basically a housekeeping issue, where we have, as you can see, the Downtown Business One District, Downtown Business Two District, and the Townhouse Corner District are being cited as new districts in the ordinance, and we have the districts that are going to be deleted at this time, which are the CCS, or the Community Commercial South District, and the Highway Commercial District. So, that's basically making a housecleaning amendment to Section 6.2. Then, when we get into the infamous land use table, the ones with checks and Cs and footnotes and so forth, you'll notice that something that's kind of unusual is that the new districts, both DB2, DB1, and TCD, which is down at Townhouse Corner District, there's no matrix, there's no reference to these particular uses. All there is, is a reference to seeing the section of the ordinance, which is 821, 822, and 8234, for the ordinance, for the particular districts. And the reason why we're doing this, very simply put, is the planning board's been working on a brand-new format for the zoning ordinance that's much easier for people, and it's district-based, which means you have a zoning district, and it has all of the information you need to know for that zoning district. Has all the land uses for that zoning district, has the setbacks, has the density, has the parking, any special requirements for parking, any special requirements for landscaping, any special requirements for site design, and anything that's pertaining specifically to that district, that's unique to that district. This is intended basically to make the land use ordinance, which was, which is convoluted and a little difficult to follow, to make it much easier. So, if you're a business owner, let's say, in the DB1 district, and you want to, or you're a prospective business owner, you want to find out, what can I do in this district? Instead of going through this matrix and losing your eyesight, you basically have this new, you just basically get a five-page doc, and you can pull it right out of the ordinance, or just look at it within the, on the website, and it will describe all the things you need to do for that particular district. So, it's intended to make it much easier. The problem is that the planning board has been working hard and diligently on this, but been slogging through it, but not fast enough to be able to convert all of the districts to this new format. In addition, the Comprehensive Planning Committee is, has approved five districts, business, or what are called mixed-use districts, but they haven't dealt with the residential yet, and they will be doing that after town meeting, attacking residential to issues. And so, rather than wait another year, we know we have business people out there who are interested in getting on with this new district, developing their property, instead of waiting again for the Comp Planning Committee and the Planning Board to finish up their work, we're going to do an interim kind of ordinance format that allows these new districts to be implemented, while the rest of them are completed, and hopefully, by next year at this time, the whole new ordinance will be introduced, and this kind of format will be gone, we'll have one single simplified format that we believe will greatly improve efficiency, make it much easier for you as property owners to know what you can and can't do in your districts, and give you a good overview of requirements if you were to come in for permits from the code enforcement officer or from the U.S. General. So, in the interim, that's why we have this kind of Frankenstein thing, where we have one, two different formats. And so, when we look at this, and you look at what kind of uses are going to be allowed in your district, in the DB1, 2, or TCD, you go directly to those sections that are specified, and then it has the list of all uses.
Recognize Bob, yes, sir?
Yeah, we have an administrative thing. On page 2, under TCD, we have Section 823 listed, that's to reserve, should be 824, and we'll be going over 824 on Townhouse Corner later. The remainder of the table is correct, so page 2...
I see it.
Yeah, on Townhouse Corner District, on page 2, it's on C-section 823, it should be C-section 824, and 824 is listed on all of the other ones, correct in every other place that I can find.
Last page, same thing, page 6.
Yeah, also, I'd like to point out that the table doesn't, we didn't change anything in all the other districts around, no changes at all, they're all included, but there's no change except for the addition of pet daycare facility. That's the only thing that makes a difference than what already exists. The only, so this is really just demonstrating that these new districts, DB1, DB2, and TCD, are to be referred to in the other, the other section. All the rest is the same.
Well, we're on the land use subject. Wayne Monro, resident of Rundle, and particularly, there was a couple of anomalies under business industrial, I just want to point it out, you're moving forward, new format and so forth in the months ahead. Under farm retail, BI, as of March 2006, last rollout, perhaps the final adoption was after that date, farm retail is conditional, and if you notice, agriculture is presently conditional. It would make sense to have farm retail to go along with agriculture as conditional. That's a recommendation to the Board. And also, mineral extraction was previously conditional, as of the March 2006 rollout, again, maybe adoption may have happened later. That was conditional, I recommend that the Board change that back to conditional, to BI. Thank you.
Yeah, the Board did not finish the BI stuff, so that's why it's not in this.
Correct, but we're on the subject of amendments, so that's why I opted to vote.
Thank you.
John? I have a question, this is on the use table, page 2, near the top, agriculture.
Do you want me to talk a little bit more, please?
Yep, on page 2, on the use table we're looking at, near the top, accessory structure, accessory use, agriculture, aquaculture, what is that?
Different subject. Aquaculture.
Aqua?
Aqua, waterborne aquaculture.
We need to change the spelling.
Sir, can you make that bigger, too?
Yeah.
Or with water.
Should be an A tag. Yeah. Page, well, that's page 2 of this.
Thank you.
Wow. Wonder how long that's been?
I just have a quick question with Wayne, yours was farm retail... Yours was farm retail, agriculture. What was he talking about? No, I just used the linkage to agriculture since it was conditional. Farm retail ought to be conditional.
Right. You had another one.
Right. Mineral extraction, yes, that ought to be conditional, I believe, as well. In that area, you know, since it was conditional recently, I'm just mistaken.
Do you have a comment on district regulations? We go to dimensional requirements.
If you're looking forward in the packet, it's the last page in Amendment 6, the article we just looked at.
Basically, under this, these are the dimensional requirements of the districts, and you can see, again, they're in a group tabular form for all the various districts. We're going to the new format. Basically, what we're going to be doing in this is, again, referring back to the new format sections, which are in Section 8 of the ordinance, and they have their own tables which show you the space and bulk requirements for any development in those three districts. So again, housecleaning.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, same, same comment.
I know.
A, B, C, D. Should be 2, 4.
Any comments from the public?
I just have a question. Sorry, Diane. None of this changed, I take it, except for adding the BI?
BI, no, nothing changed except for...
Except for, I mean, except for adding the DB, DB2, and TC.
Correct. Yeah, any changes should be underlined or struck out?
Okay. I don't think anyone had.
Go to item two, proposed amendments, the red land use on performance standards. First one up would be 7.5, which should be lighted.
Again, most of these changes, again, this is really housekeeping, most of these cases, the lighting standards for the DB1, DB2, and the TCD districts are in those district regulations. Again, so that when you look at those regulations, and you see what you're going to have for lighting standard, it's in there instead of having to turn it back to this page all the time. Most of the references you'll see where you have underlines are those inclusions of those And elimination of the CCS and HC's in the tables.
Mr. Bob?
Under 7.5B, we're adding DB1, DB2, but we haven't included Townhouse Corner. That has its separate lighting as well.
I don't know where you are.
7.5B.
This is TCD district, isn't it, Bob?
Yeah.
Get references everywhere within the ordinance, 7.5B itself, it does not say TCD.
In case you're wondering where that is, it's halfway down the first page.
See that? Add?
Yeah. I think it was not intended to be in there. I just check and see.
It's referenced in all the sections.
However, the gas stations are not in the TCD district.
Okay.
Yep, that's essentially why it's not cited in B, is because gas station, automobile service stations, excuse me, are not permitted in TCD districts. That's why. Okay?
I apologize.
Yep. Any comments from the public, questions?
You said that was because of gas station, automobile service station, but it looks like that 7.5B also includes exterior displays, sales, and lighting or parking areas. But that doesn't look like it. Is that all related to just automobile service? So, lighting of exterior displays and lighting of parking areas, is that all of the 7.5B1, 7.5B2, and 7.5B3, is that all just related to automobile and gasoline?
No. And that's why it says in cases where lighting performance standards for DB1, DB2, and TC, or TCD district conflict with a section. So TCD is plugged back into this section. But it isn't in the automobile service section because, otherwise, we'd be giving the implication that automobile, that you could put automobile service station in that district.
Yes. Excuse me, I just want to agree with what Diane was bringing up. I think, I think it should be in there, because 7.5B is the umbrella to three different sections under it. It may not apply to automobile service stations, because there won't be any, but it will apply to parking areas and display sales areas.
But that's why it's referenced in there separately, because it's messy. Yeah, nobody argues that it isn't messy, but we haven't redelved this whole thing yet.
So, I guess the question, why wouldn't it be included in 7.5B if everything else is in there? What about a parking?
Because it's referenced in there later, Tom.
It's, it's...
It's already referenced in there.
It's referenced in exterior display and in the lighting and parking area.
Not really. This is saying, 7.5B says the following additional standards apply. Okay, so...
If you go to 7.5B2 and 7.5B3, Tom, should I call them out specifically or bring them back to TCD?
I understand what Tom is saying.
If DB1 and DB2 are also spelled out there, too.
7.5B is the overriding control for everything, so it probably should be listed there. Mr. Chairman, although I appreciate the Planning Board's comments, those really belong at the end of the meeting, and it's good to develop them, but this is really for the public to make their comments and not for us to use as a workshop, if I may just be so bold.
You're correct.
Go ahead.
I'm 7.5A, and it goes back to 2000. If somebody changed any lighting in any places, they have to change, they have to go to all the new things, all the new codes?
No, this, what happens in these situations, Tommy, is that this is for any new stand, any new lighting that goes in. If you were to change any lighting, it would have to meet these standards. If you have existing lighting, you don't have to retrofit it. You just, if you add lighting, you have to meet these standards.
So it looks like when an outdoor lighting installation is being modified, extended, or added to the entire lighting installation, shall be subject to the requirements of this section. It says the entire. So that means if somebody had a business, or Marty had a business, and he had a light on the sign, he'd have to, he'd have to change the sign if he had lights up by his building, or if I had some, I think, lighting on all the windows, but that's not right. It's just going to put people off business if they want to modify something. They had to spend 50 grand.
Their specific lighting.
I went to the Wiz Motors, I went through there today, and I looked at all the things, and oh, Christ, I'm going to tell them.
Well, this isn't anything we're changing, I don't believe. I believe this is existing right now.
And there's additional lighting in each of the three new sections. In that section, there's additional stuff on lighting. So this isn't any different than what's there today, but when you go to the three different individual sections, DB1, DB2, and Townhouse Corner District, there's additional lighting allowances for those specific districts.
Yes.
Do you want to add from again? Thank you for what Gavin wrote. You could settle this whole issue by saying that any lighting that's currently installed is grandfathered. Anything that's going in new should be under the new standards. I don't know how that affects what's in there, that somebody grabbed, I have no idea. All I have is a light in front of my garage, and that's it.
Yes, man.
Marty Hess Palmer, 7.5, I don't understand why 7.5B does not include TCD when TCD in every, underneath that, in 7.5B1, B2, mentions TCD.
Sounds like this is a big issue.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back to what I said, because, I'm sorry, the entire board didn't have to make the argument, and I'm not going to put it anywhere. On the Townhouse Corner District, under conditional uses, that has automotive service. So when you take 7.5B, and you do not include the Townhouse Corner District, then you're, then you now have automotive service that doesn't have the same lighting standards as the rest of anyone else who wants to put in an automotive service station. So if you're going to use automotive, it should be the same no matter what business district you're in. So I'm sorry, but it belongs to you.
And there is, Diane, there is a specific lighting requirement in the Townhouse Corner District. So if you go to that district, there is lighting, and it gives you what's allowed in that light in that district.
And does it, does it address automobile service station?
It addresses whatever is permitted and conditional in that district.
And I understand that, Diane, but what I'm saying is, all three of the new districts have specific lighting standards. These are additional lighting standards, but it appears that on automotive service, we're putting different standards on two districts and not the same on the other one. And I think they should all have the same. I think it belongs to you.
Remember one thing about the TCD district, it's a totally different district than DB1 and DB2. The TCD district is a, is a neighborhood commercial district, competitive deal to be lower scale than the DB1 or DB2. It's not on the same par in terms of intensity of uses, same schedule of uses. You'll notice that it's very limited in, in terms of the amount of square footage that is allowed for various kinds of businesses, and that's because the intent of that district is to fit mixed-use commercial into an existing residential district. Certainly, you don't want to use, basically, a Route 1 standard in a residential district, and that's, I think, why we made distinction there. And also, you'll notice there's a smaller light pole, if you look at those standards, there's a shorter light pole in the TCD district to be more complementary with the residential character of that area, whereas the Route 1 corridor is decidedly commercial and has more intense uses. And so that's, I think, one of the distinctions we were trying to make. But, I mean, from administrative standpoint, you certainly can put in TCD in every single location and then allow those standards to apply on the individual basis within the And that's administrative something you can do that doesn't really change any of the, any real content. We can change numberings, we can change things like that. In fact, there's a warrant, and I think that even refers to making administrative changes, like small changes like that, or numbering errors, or omissions of this nature.
Any other questions?
Phil Prince, remember. Because of the way these are lettered, 7.5B, anything that falls under it is a subset of it. So therefore, Townhouse District needs to be in the 7.5B description. It does, it's not, if the lighting or any of the other standards below it aren't saying they're necessarily applied to the Townhouse Corner District, they're saying that everything that follows down through that whole section, all the ABCs, the twos, et cetera, they're all part of a subset of 7.5, so it needs to show. If you're doing this correctly, it needs to show up.
Okay. So, look.
Okay. Do you know that? This, some way for public comment?
I want to, I want to.
Mr. Public Gary, let the public speak, and then we'll make our comments.
That's what we got at the end, the end of the proposal, it's at the end of the paper.
I want to speak as a business man. You want me to come on the other side?
Go ahead.
My question is, with all the lighting and everything else, and I'm speaking as a business man, not as a fan board member, okay? Fact is, all these lightings and everything else, the restrictions, what, that is all falling onto businesses, what responsibility does the town have for lighting for the business?
Comment, taken. Any other comments on lighting? Okay, next item is off-peak parking and loading.
Again, more of an intent to just make references to the three districts. And there will be no additional, the only parking changes or standards that are different in those three districts are location of parking specified, which is not something that's specified in the general standard. Remember, these are general standards that apply in all districts except where they are specifically excluded or supersated by a specific standard in the individual districts. So, again, this references the DB1, DB2, and the TCD district, eliminates references to the HC, the CCS, and the, well, the HC and the CCS, and then, basically, eliminates those standards that refer to a standard that is specified in the individual district for parking along parking lots, or landscaping along parking lots. Spaces are the same. We have not expanded parking requirements for various uses, have made any real changes or additions to this. So there's been no changes to the various uses. Many of these uses can pretty much be shoehorned in some of the existing classifications that we have.
Any comments? Questions?
On page two, under 7.6, 7.3, 7.4, there does appear to be a change, and it says the landscaping area shall be a minimum that it used to be 15 feet wide, but now it's being changed to 25 feet wide.
It's because it's 25 in the BI district, and we're eliminating the other ones and just leaving it for the BI district. Right now, if you, if we go down further, the standard is 25 for the BI district.
But won't that negatively impact the other areas?
Well, they have landscaping, and when we go into those individual locations, they have their own landscaping and lawn parking.
That's a good point. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. No kids, sort of signs?
I think you skipped over 7, 8, landscaping. Okay, landscaping was pretty anemic in the existing ordinance. And actually, in the comp plan, the 2007 comp plan, there was a goal to beef up landscaping and make it much more clear for people, both property owners and business owners, to have a clearer idea of what's expected, because there were very amorphous, very undefined requirements for what landscaping was required, what kind of trees were required, what size. I mean, the size of the trees was specified, but the numbers, where they belong, was not very well specified. We left it really up to the board. So one planning board could require you to put a tree every 20 feet along in front of your property, and another one could decide you don't need them at all. So the objective of the landscaping was threefold. Number one, to meet that requirement that the planning board be more specific, so we are more specific. Number two, to make a minimum standard so that the planning board can't ask for more than the minimum standard. Number three, so you can make your appropriate plan when you're doing a site design or a site plan. And there's also a little one, a little section in here that is also regarding, I should say, what is expected from a landscape material, you know, what the plan is, what the quality of the stock is. But I think the most important one is really in section 7, 8, 5, because this is one of the biggest things that landscaping is used for in the town, and there is no definition. What is buffering? What's the difference between buffering and screening? What are you supposed to achieve? There've been property owners who write a buffering requirement in which they basically were given an impossible task as a general standard that their project could not be seen from any adjacent property. Quite frankly, those things are, in many cases, impossible to achieve, especially in some cases where topography or vegetation makes it impossible. So when we talk about buffering and we talk about screening, we've provided two definitions of what those mean. And where you will see buffering and screening elsewhere in the ordinance, there's a distinction made between them. Screening basically is something in which the objective is to just put a little, basically some level of vegetation or fence or bounding or something between you and another use. And that can range anywhere between 25 and 74, but screening does not mean you can't see the other property, or you cannot see the other land use. Buffering, on the other hand, especially situations where we have high-intensity commercial next to residential, buffering deals with the issue of trying to provide as much screening as absolutely possible where you can't see, that's to obstruct the view. And the objective is to visually obstruct that, and that could be done with vegetation, it could be done with a number of different things, but its intent is to make sure there's no visual penetration in that particular area.
Any comments, questions? That's Diane.
Sure. I'm sorry. I read the old landscaping document, and while I have to agree, it's short and sweet. I do have some questions about what's on here. Under section 7.8 point 3, trees, it says a parking which are being installed on a public street, granting any activities specified in section 781. That's like almost any new business use. Now, you're talking, this is supposed to be, I take it, changes to the business districts, correct?
Yep.
So, I hate to say this, but I don't know that there's a whole lot of room in some places to put these types of trees between the business and the road.
Well, we use the term where applicable.
Well, I'm not sure where I'm reading where applicable.
Number two, location.
It just says, street trees shall be installable on public streets in accordance with the space and quantities listed below. Then it says, location is where it applies. So are you saying that that's going to be compotted just to site plan? So when you're doing, when you're doing an approval or plan...
That's only where these apply, is these situations apply when you're going to site plan or conditional use.
Okay. Under...
Because there's, actually, we have no authority without those.
Okay. Under 7.8 point 3D, it says the property only grants the town a maintenance easement that enables the town free access and perpetuity for hard cultural maintenance purposes.
Yeah.
And under what part of my taxpayer money would you like to budget this?
Well...
I mean, I'm sorry, but I, you know, as a town, we struggle with taking care of what we already are responsible for, including some of the sign, street lights coming. But I'm a little concerned about taking on and go for a time.
I just want, no, what you've done, I just want to say that I don't believe the intent here is that we're going to be origami-ing people's trees. Roger runs into situations a lot of times where heavy snow load on tree branches will cause obstruction in the road. This gives us the blanketed authorization to go out and cut branches that become a nuisance and that can't be navigated around by vehicular traffic. If it snaps off and it needs to be cut off at the tree, that doesn't, we don't need permission from the tree owner to go remove that obstruction. I wouldn't interpret that, maybe the next town manager will, but I wouldn't have Roger out throwing people's trees.
Is this something that we can, is, I would ask that if you're looking at this language under this maintenance easement section, that that be clear, that the town is not going to take on maintaining trees, because if you take a look at Portland's budget for maintaining their trees...
Oh, I know their budget, yeah. No, 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 that's not the intent.
Okay, it's just one of those...
And I'm no Jeff Tony.
It caused me a little concern. And then under species...
Yeah.
It says, all proposed species shall be selected from a list of street trees for the town to run though.
Yep.
So we're going to add a list of trees?
Yeah. What that street tree, what that would be, that does two things, it does three things. Number one, it actually provides a list of trees that are easy for property owners to be able to select the right tree, because it specifies what condition they should be used in. For instance, you don't want to put a weeping willow next to your septic system. You don't want Norway maples next to your sidewalk. You want, so basically, in many ways, it's a citizen's guide to pick the right tree without picking the wrong one in the wrong application. So it has application, it has the species, and it has readily available, and you get to pick it. The reason why we do that is threefold. Number one is to help citizens not spend money on something that's going to die where you're going to stick the wrong tree in the wrong place. And number two, it also ensures that there's something that you can pick that you can readily get. Quite frankly, I've had a number of people come before the planning board that have specified some wild specimens because they read it out of O'Donnell's or some other catalog, and they're not available, or they cost a fortune. So you get a Crimson King, so it's meant to do two things. It's meant to do, to ensure that the right tree's in the right place and to also help you save money.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something because I'm kind of passionate about this kind of stuff. I thought the whole purpose of redoing some of the latest regulations was supposed to try to make it easier for businesses. And I don't see this as being easy. If somebody comes in and wants to put in $2,000 trees, I really don't care. If someone wants to put in a weeping willow next to their septic system, they're the ones that are going to have to pay to replace that septic system. I don't care if they want to plant it. But what I don't want to see happen is, I don't want to see our rules or regulations go way off to the right-hand side or the left-hand side, depending on how you want to look at it, and make it so businesses are going to come into town and say, okay, now you've got this whole list of trees and I have to pick from these trees now and I can't plant what I want on my own property, fine, I'm going to another town. I don't want to see that happen. And I'm a little concerned when we start getting into lists of trees. So we've gone from not dictating what they have to have at all, to now we're going to give them a list of specified trees. I've lived in this town for 30-some odd years. You came to my house and told me what I had to plant the trees or gave me a list of what I had to plant, you would probably find me in my front yard with my shop.
And I would agree with you. I would agree with you, but I would also argue with you, if you're a business owner and you're coming to the planning board and you're saying, I want to put this Norway maple here, and they say, no, we don't like that. Or you say, geez, I want to just put in these things, and they say, we don't like that, go get something else. That's not business-friendly either. What that is, is that's obstructionist. And right now, the comp plan itself said that our land, that many of our ordinances are so vague that they can be obstructionist. The intent of this is to make it easier, pick from your menu here and go. You've got something else you want to put in, I'm sure the planning board's going to listen. If you really want to go get, and this is Silvatica, you want to go get a black tupe and put it in, fine, you know, I'm sure they'll listen to it. In fact, we can make a, we can make a big enough list so you can put in your black tupe. Good luck finding it.
Fine, whatever you find.
Well, the objective was to try to make it easier by providing a list, a menu for you to pick.
Under number 7.8 point 3, number seven, it talks about performance assurances.
Yep.
And it says, assurances for landscaping, screening, and buffering under site plan review conditional use, shall remain going from a show to the amount of 14% of the total landscape budget, so, shall extend for a period of three years from the date of installation. I just need to understand what this is.
It's true that the permit material that you install doesn't die.
Say that again?
It basically puts a limit on the time period in which plant material that's required by the planning board has to live. There are situations where somebody installs plant material and it dies, and if it's part of the conditional use of that permit, and it dies 10 years from now, legitimately, the planning board could in fact say, wow, you're in violation of your permit, you've got to go put your trees in it, just put the limit to it for years.
Here you're talking about 14% of the total landscape budget. Are you expecting that they're going to put this money in account and leave it held up until the three-year time span has passed?
They put it in tri-party force, that's the way we do it, so they hold on to their own money.
Are they required to do that today?
They could if the planning board wanted to.
Do we require that they put 14% of their landscape...
No.
...in there today?
No, we do not.
So if you're putting in a big project, you could tie up an awful lot of their money.
Yep.
Okay.
Or the planning board come back at you in five years and say, all your trees died, go replace them, otherwise you're in violation of your permit.
Well, I would just soon have somebody come to replace their trees and have somebody walk away, because they're not going to put 14% of their budget in account for three years after they finish putting a business in town, if they don't have to do that in towns, and I don't think they do. I think we went a little overboard, thank you.
The vicious tree here is just a quick comment. It's a lady's tree problem. What happens if some strange bird or squirrel or other animal that likes to do, you know, eat nuts or whatever, deposits one in your land and it's not the tree that's specified by the town? Are you supposed to cut it down? Or, well, you're in Florida, you know, enjoying the sun, and it matures when you're away, must the resolution?
Well, this is a...
It's not dictatorial to say that you can only plant this kind of tree in this kind of state, in this kind of town, and everything else is excluded. I mean, that's, there's a precedent for what happens with that kind of policy.
You realize, of course, that number one, this applies to only those businesses or those activities that involve site plan review, which is nobody who builds a residence, okay? This applies to the landscaping requirement that we can only have for businesses and multifamily homes in this town. And anything that's, whatever additional that a squirrel plants at a gas station or something else, fine. This just deals with meeting that minimum requirement for landscaping that's required in the site plan or the conditional requirement right now.
Are you, are you going to give all of the vermin and things a plan of what the residential poses in 12 hours, or people from Dover, you know, business someplace?
Well, you know, it doesn't apply to the residential, sir. As I said, it only applies to businesses that currently have to provide landscaping under a current ordinance, and provides some level of certainty instead of basically reading it through the planning board. That's all it's trying to do. The intent is trying to basically make it easier for people instead of...
Can I make a comment? Yeah, I think, I think the one point in the middle of Ted's thing is the, is the real key. These are minimum requirements when something new is going in. So anything additional above that, it doesn't matter from where, if you plant your favorite kind of tree, or a squirrel does, that's fine, as long as that's not...
Where does new stop?
I'm sorry?
So where does new stop? Must be facility or whatever it is that's installed, and he is there. Does it come under the ordinance, or does it come under something else?
If you had met the minimum requirement at the time of site, as Ted had explained under the site plan review or our review, then you're good, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Add is add, that's the minimum requirement when something new is...
Any other comments, questions? Diane?
Sorry, I missed one. I did make notes. Under parking lot landscaping, 7.8 point 6, number four, it talks about island plantings. Those perched or depressed planted islands shall be constructed every 120 feet between parking rows. Is that anywhere in our ordinance today?
No.
Do you realize we live in Maine and we plow these parking lots?
That's why we have to, yes, we do.
I mean, while some of this stuff may make sense to the planning board and to a planner, for those of us that don't even own a business, but understand enough about how one operates or understands how to follow, putting islands in a parking lot don't always make sense. I mean, it might make sense in Florida if you're not plowing, but they don't always make sense. And this doesn't look to me like this is, and if they tell you to cut them, this looks like, this looks like this is what you're supposed to do. So if someone has a big parking lot, you're using up a bunch of their parking lot by putting in island plantings, and you're also driving up the cost of that putting a business in.
120 feet is four rows of parking, that's four aisles of parking. That's a big, that's a very big expanse. We're not asking for every single, this will affect only very large parking lots, this would affect somebody like Walmart or somebody like that, who puts in a lot of parking. And you should realize that a double row is 60 feet by our standards. That means you're going to have four aisles, so four rows of parking stacked up next to each other before you have an aisle. The intent of that is to help provide some definition and some shade pooling, basically, and to break up the parking lot. Otherwise, you're going to have, see, in some cases, especially in something like Walmart or, and I don't mean a Walmart, I don't want to get people scared, but let's say we have a large facility, because remember, in the DB2, we have 100,000 square foot building, maximum footprint, that's going to generate a lot of parking. The intent is to break up that parking visually, break it up by providing some pooling from these trees, and frankly, it's pretty standard stuff for larger developments. You'll find it, finally, you know, you want to go over to Walmart, you'll see it at Walmart. You'll see it at Home Depot, you'll see it at various places where you have large, massive parking lots. This is not going to affect the person who has a small, double-loaded parking lot or even a three... even a three-tiered parking lot because it's not a hundred and twenty feet between them. So you're going to have to go over five aisles of, of parking before this affects you.
So you're talking about our car dealerships?
No, it's parking aisles. There, that's outdoor display for them. This is parking aisles. I believe our car dealership has about twenty parking spaces and they don't have this situation. That's an outdoor display for them.
I think that particular standard is ahead of its time for this town in southern Maine. Firstly, I can't think of any parking lot at a large commercial development anywhere in southern Maine that has this standard. There is a benefit to stormwater, you might integrate that into your stormwater design. However, you're also creating a lot more impervious asphalt with this standard in a way, which you're going to have to have a much bigger parking lot now that you're taking up these tree islands. It's probably, you know, a visionary concept, but I think it's ahead of its time, just off of that. You want to write it into a stormwater standard, it might be more difficult.
Well, that's why it's got a depressed in there, Wayne, because that's exactly what the depressed island is. It's actually a runoff, or you would say it would be a watershed routing system that you could use. You can put some trees in there, so the intent, I would actually always advocate more of the watershed routing by a depressed rather than a raised island. It's also cheaper, as you well know.
Subject to design, but really think about the footprint you're extending in that parking lot, you know, you're going to plant some trees, but you are extending the parking lot.
But it's still the same amount of impervious surface. It's, it's no net increase.
Can you cite a commercial development within a hundred miles that has this?
That has the under?
Right, that has this type of standard in the parking lot. Existing.
A hundred miles, I used to be the city manager in the city of Hollowell, and we had a standard that, because of exactly what you said, the stormwater runoff and the.
Not the standard, but the parking lot, has one been built?
Walmart has.
Not like this.
They have, they have bumper strips.
They have bumper strips around.
But anyway.
Home Depot has.
It's not depressed, but it's curved.
Be cognizant of the.
Orchard Beach has standards right now.
Just be cognizant of the friendliness to attract business.
Absolutely.
Maine's not a friendly business state, and we just brought someone in from Utah who's number one in the country. Just be cognizant of that, we want to attract business.
I plowed snow in Massachusetts a lot, and we used to plow market baskets. We had to stop, it was costing us so much money to replace or fix curvings every year, and it was part of the rules like this, and now all the people aren't building the vacant lots, a nice place like a market basket, and they had all kinds of other things, sort of like the one in Kenny Brook. And we couldn't do it anymore, and their costs went up about five times in the plowing cost because of the curvings that they had. We just couldn't do it, it was too expensive for us to do it.
Any other comments, questions?
Roger, that's Diane.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not a member of the public, but Ted, how do you achieve a hundred and forty percent visual screening?
I did, I did that enough. I have no idea how forty gets in there, I have no idea.
It's a black hole.
It's a black hole. I was wondering if somebody was hoping nobody would pick up on that. Okay, we'll proceed to signs. All right, signs, again, sign area, signs themselves are specified for individual districts. We used to have this, it was notice, we used to have this chart down here, and again, because we want to go to the individual districts, I would recommend that we all, that, that we, basically, since we can't change this and change this format or this at this point, again, it refers to the sign specifications in the DB one-two and also in the TCD. There are some other changes within the text here. There's a reference to something we haven't had before, which is digital signage, you'll notice there's a reference to that. We do talk about not emitting audio or pyrotechnics, but we also talk about digital signage permitted in the DB one and two districts, which we don't have right now. So, so that's a new thing. Let's see, what other things in here? Contractor signs, again, we're just changing the specifications on the, the names. And of course, making the changes in the HC, the CCS, and the DB one and two. And then, making references, the, instead of deleting all this stuff, we basically are talking about the square footage that's allowed, unless otherwise permitted, the specific regulations for each zone district, so it's referring back to the specific regulations on the zoning districts. Comments, questions? None. Okay, this is a request that was made by the, by the folks at the, at the Arundel Seasonal Cotages Project. What they found in doing their market analysis, in their market study, is that they were at a bit of a, they had a bit of a problem because our current ordinance limits the occupancy of seasonal cottages from May first to October, and the issue with that is that most of the seasonal cottages that these guys are going to be competing with go all the way to December thirty-first. They go basically eight months. The town's always concerned about this stuff because obviously seasonal cottages, the big advantage of them is they produce no, they produce positive cash flow, that they are not occupied year-round, and in fact, they are occupied short periods so that we will not see them with children in the school. The reason why they asked for it to be extended is because apparently prelude is a big deal to a lot of folks who are in the market group that buy these things, and they like to come up for fall foliage, they like to come up for Thanksgiving, and they like to go to prelude. We cannot go beyond December thirty-first because I, when we start getting into a situation where we don't want this to, any mission creep in here where these would eventually might attempt or, or try to become year-round, these are not year-round, this is a lodging facility, this is specifically limited, and all of the covenant standards that are required in this require them to vacate it so they don't put kids in the school. But they did ask us to do this because it just improves their market position with the market group that tried to get from Massachusetts and the Mid-Atlantic states. Any comments, questions?
I just want to make sure I understand, so this is, I mean, this is, doesn't affect them committing, this is just whether they are going to be allowed to be open until December as opposed to October. The ordinance is already banned, the ordinance is already.
Originally, when they came from board, I think it was a little, a totally fifteen, hold on a second.
Yes.
Then they came back and asked for the extension.
So, so this really has nothing to do with any of the definitions or anything else that was, so why, why would this not be at least put separately so this, we have an
Any other comments?
Okay, as someone who's sat through a theme, I'm not exaggerating, he aids with this seasonal cottage people, because that was not a permitted use. And for someone that sits on the crowd school board, very, she'll carry you out, this is a little concerning to me because this past years ago, they have done no work. It's cost us additional money, and when you're talking about being open until December, now you're taking a chance that some of these people may decide that they want to put their kids in school here and stop them here and then move them back to wherever they are for the rest of the year. The whole, I think one of the whole reasons that we discussed this is that we wanted to ensure that we were not taking on any additional costs from the seasonal resort. And for me, when you start staying open until December thirty-first, you've got four more months, you've got September, October, November, fifteenth, you've got four months into the school year, that you've got kids living in these houses. And I don't want to take on any additional kids into the school district, even if it's for four months, because four months is four months, you still have to hire the teachers, and you're not going to get rid of the teachers after four months because the kids are out. This would be better suited once they started building something and once they started proving that they could live to some of the expectations, but they haven't done anything out there. And I'm sorry, but I'm not even trying to start changing the rules before they even go to ground.
So, if this project goes through, this will bring millions of dollars to this town. I think it's a very, very low risk to have one, two, or maybe three kids in our school system. You know, most people that are going to come from this are away, you know, they're far away, this is a seasonal resort, they're going to come here, and I think to shoot this down because of the possibility of one, two, three, or what if there's ten, this is going to bring millions of dollars to this town, and to shoot it down because of that, I think is ludicrous. First of all, and the other thing is, they haven't done any work. Who has? Look at the market out there today. The market out there today is very soft, and they haven't done nothing because that market is soft. Their study has shown that if they go to the end of December, it's a more, it's more feasible for the folks that are coming in to do that, so.
Yeah, I'd also add that they've provided significant funding already to the town and made the water possible over, along with the pumping station. So they've, they've done a significant contribution, I think, today, although the project isn't going because of economics, they've got quite a bit of money invested in trying to make this thing work.
I just wanted to clarify, Diane, they do have over a hundred thousand dollars, my understanding, in the booster station that they put on the property. In June at town meeting, this is going to come up for vote for the tax increment financing district. The details are being worked out right now, they'll be posted on the website as soon as that is finalized. After the conversation I had with you, Diane, I had the developer assure us that they're going to fund the legal fees that are associated with this tip, taking into consideration of your comments work and where you were heading. I brought that to their attention, and it's a very vocal resident in the town of Arundel who's more than happy to go to town meeting with Scotty with his project. They made names, they took that very seriously. He went to his investment team and got them to commit to paying for the legal fees. So that is being taken care of. If the tip, tax increment financing district passes at town meeting in June, they've indicated to me that as soon, as humanly possible, and when they say that, they mean July first is what they're hoping, they will begin in progress doing the Route One improvements and doing the infrastructure improvements for phase one. So I am not here to speak on their behalf, I'm not here to promote the project, it's not my job, but I wanted to clarify that for you and let you know that if this project reaches full fruition, as proposed, they'll be adding approximately fifty-eight million dollars to the valuation of the town of Arundel. It is a deferred, it will be a deferred benefit in its entirety, but the way it has been negotiated was that only seventy-five percent of the value will be captured, understanding that the people of Arundel need to realize a benefit to their tax dollars. So twenty-five percent of the value of that district is going directly into the town's coffers rather than having it wait for twenty-five years. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, I just want to add that, you know, I, we're all concerned about the, you know, impact on the school system, but I can't imagine anybody would put their child in a school system until December and switch them halfway through the year. No, you're just going to jeopardize their education for that.
Sorry, Roger, and thank you for reminding me of that. I am going to check with the superintendent. I believe in the, in the requirements of those properties, it's not allowed to be their primary residence because they cannot reside here year-round. It's not their primary residence, it is my understanding that the superintendent, superintendent of schools will not allow them to be entered into the school system.
Excuse me, I have a question for you.
I don't think, I don't think that's correct.
With this, with this project that you're talking about, which I have no knowledge of, what is, is this operation going to be getting a big tax break from the town of Arundel?
That is what the proposal will be at town meeting. Correct. All of that information will be on the website, hopefully at the beginning of next week once it's finalized, and I will send out email alerts to anybody that signs up to have that information.
That's great. And will it spell out?
It spells out the, everything. It spells out the amount of money that's going to the developer, the amount of money that's going into the town's development fund, and the amount of money that is going to the general funding fund, assuming certain break points.
You know, if you save the state fund.
All of that will be on that.
Any further comments or questions? Let's see, I'd like to move to drive-through facilities. Where are we going to?
Eight point two five. Drive-through.
Drive-through facilities. Oh, okay. Yeah, guess it's all up there. Back in, I think it was August of two thousand and eleven, the planning board held a workshop with business owners and asked them things they wanted to see in the town, things that, that they would, if they had magic wands, they would, and they could wave what they would want to see. And one of the things that everybody had talked about was, can't we have some drive-through facilities? We can get them, we can get Dunkin' Donuts coffee or something like that where we can actually drive, have drive-in or drive-through facilities? And we don't have any standards for that. Well, now we do, and they're also considered to be a used drive-through facilities, our uses in the districts. And in order to do those uses, we needed to come up with some standards to make sure that they were safe and they would work. So that's what eight-two-five is. It's a brand-new section, and it deals exclusively with the design specifications for a drive-through facility. It's basically talking about drive-through lanes physically separated from onsite parking areas, we know that. You've seen enough drives, you've gone through enough Dunkin' Donuts or enough McDonald's, this isn't really much different than any other thing. We do have, let's see, what do we have in here? We have queue lengths in here for banks, we have number of vehicles per drive-through window, lane lengths, food services, different lengths, under thirty feet, you know, it's enough for, for eight cars, and also, we make sure we have a reference to pedestrian safety. So we ensure any place where pedestrians are crossing, getting into the facility, that those are well-marked, and if necessary, stop signs, speed bumps are designed as part of that. So it gives the planning board some standards to work with in order to allow drive-through facilities on Route One.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
What areas are you going to allow these drive-throughs?
One second, please. Go ahead.
Your name, sir.
Why, why are you specifying that the traffic has to move in a counterclockwise direction?
So the driver's sign right up next to the window.
Basically, yeah, thank you. Otherwise, it's a passenger sign. If you think of it, if you go through, go through.
When I drove into the bank, it's in a clockwise direction. So I didn't come clockwise.
It circles off to the left.
Right.
Just a quick question, where, where do we see these drive-through facilities to be located? I'm thinking about, you know, Loggattan Road or Mother Road, Humbert Road, Senate Road, just like. Just not just driving down any one of those things to get, you know, a cup of coffee. Then you stop at Winks and get that. Or you can get, get it up at, uh, one more market or the other market.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Where are we going?
There was a big request for Dunkin' Donuts. And I'm not.
You can get that in Kennebunk.
This is in the DB one and DB two, and I'm not sure. I think it's in the, in the townhouse corner.
It's conditional.
It's conditional in the townhouse, yeah. So, yeah, it's allowed in, in those, in those three districts right now.
Which domain is this?
In the, in the downtown district one, downtown district two, in the townhouse corner.
Along Route One.
Along Route One and, uh, along Log Cabin.
Along Hill. At the end of Log.
Yes, in the TCD district, yeah. So it opens up that possibility.
Any other comments or questions? Miss Diane?
I just had, I just had a question on the eight-point-two-five point one. Um, it says all lanes should be physically separated from onsite parking. But if you look at most of the designs of the Dunkin' Donuts, while they have a drive-through lane, they still have access to the onsite parking. It's not completely. I'm, I'm not sure what the intent is here. I don't know if it's intended to have it never have access from the other parking area, but most of them still have access from the actual parking area.
Yes, and there's going to be access. It's basically to make sure that people stay in the lane and don't go out into the, into the parking lot. They stay in the basic lane. But there will be access points from the parking lots and access, and obviously at that access point in and access point out.
Diane, it's also a measure so that you don't use your, your access around the building as your drive-through lane. So that you don't have that conflict between the two uses.
No, and, and that was just the way it was written. The way it was written, it said that should be physically separated from onsite parking areas and associated circulate lanes and driveways preferred by a planted traffic island. So to me, that was the intention. We didn't want it to be merged at all. And I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, that's all.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Pet daycare centers.
This was a lot of fun. There is demand and has been increasing demand as, as pets, especially dogs and cats, have become more and more important to people in family life, that they have daycare. The ability to, uh, you know, be taken care of during the day at a, as a separate facility, no different than child daycare or elder daycare. And, uh, so since we had this, we've had some requests about this, we've decided we better come up with some rules about it. And frankly speaking, it's, it's not an easy one. We don't, we say a pet daycare because there are always possibilities that people won't want other animals besides dogs and cats to be cared for. All the standards that we've gotten, we've gotten from veterinarian associations. These standards are basically from them and they're referenced in here. It's, uh, basically the object is, it's really targeted at dogs since dogs produce probably the most potential for impact on neighbors or on the adjacent land uses, especially barking dogs or taking care of dog behavior and, uh, interaction. And also minimum space for dogs. Cats have much different standards and they're actually much less vigorous than they are for dogs. I can't give you a standard for pot-bellied pigs, but we look for it. But, uh, this basically says it's, it's limited to domestic animal, domestic pets. No exotics, no wild animals, no arachnoids, no, no of that stuff. And as it says, species served shall be limited, dogs, cats, and other domesticated pets. It also requires, especially for dogs, certified dog pet trainers or, and a member of association of professional dog trainers is to make sure that we don't have massive dog fights on a regular basis. And the minimum staff ratio of one to twelve dogs is, is again a standard of the association. And we have them located in the DB one, in the DB two.
Excuse me. Could you define an arachnoide?
I don't have a definition for it. You caught me. I didn't put a definition in the definitions. Spiders.
Thank you.
I, I didn't put a definition of arachnoide. I figured we could have a dictionary on that one.
You wouldn't think that would make daycare better.
You nev, you know, the point is, you never know.
They might have a tarantula in there.
They might have a tarantula, they might have a boa, you know? Well, I don't fully, I don't know of any daycare one. We have, they're often, they can be associated with kennels. We do have standards for kennels and we do have locations for kennels.
Kennels are different things.
But a kennel is a different animal.
Where they stay overnight, right?
That choice of, yeah, that's where they stay overnight. This is for, this is like a, a childcare facility. Drop them off in the morning, pick them up in the evening. And it's, it's actually good business. A lot of people are, are doing it. It's good business. And it's a need. There's a need for it. And we've had some, some people have discussed this, so we have it. In here as a standard with play areas. Our play areas are actually a little bit less than the standard by the association because they're pretty, pretty strong. And of course, they, they talk about, um, double-gated systems, excessive barking by dogs, and of course, dog waste. And so it also apply to cats and so forth. But dog waste is usually, the issue is outdoor deposition and how that could affect, obviously, adjacent properties in, not only in odors, but also in groundwater contamination. So that's why we have these standards in here.
Any comments, questions? Miss Diane?
Um, under number one, it says in the commercial, uh, commercial lease lease, and I know you have the R four in different areas, but that first sentence is a little deceiving because we don't really indicate the R four, although you do talk about it in number eight. Under number eight, it talks about not having more than twenty-four dollars. I would ask that you take a look at the one, I don't know if it's in Saco or Buxton, but you can see it from the turnpike. It's the big barn with all the paws and going down the side of it, and then you're going down in Saco. You know, that place is gorgeous and they've made really good use of agricultural property that's low impact. But I think that if anyone's going to open one of these pet daycare places, that limiting it to twenty-four is probably not going to make it very feasible if they want to buy a big piece of land. Then under number nine, you stated that they couldn't use more than fifty percent of the property, outdoor portion. If they have a rather large piece of property, limiting them to fifty percent, it's probably limiting them too much. You know, if they own sixty acres and you're only, you're making it so they can only use thirty of their sixty acres, I think you might, you might want to ask that we consider that and maybe it should be proportionate to the amount of land that they have. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions?
Okay, let's go to item three. Proposed amendments around land use on the two districts. We'll start with, uh, eight-point-two-one on the downtown business one district. Okay, the downtown business one, downtown business two are two districts. They were originally created by the planning board or they were envisioned by the planning board to be in compliance with the two thousand seven comprehensive plan. In the two thousand seven comprehensive plan, there was a strong requirement in there. It was actually, it's still in the ordinance, it's still in the comp plan, that required the CCS, what we call the CCS of the existing Route One district, to be, uh, to be a small-scale, and as the name says, community commercial district. Small-scale uses intended basically to, uh, create a village-like atmosphere and to provide services for local residents and neighboring residences. And, um, it had a requirement for architectural standards and, or science standards. And we can read it in the ordinance, or, excuse me, in the comp plan right now. And that's what we have right now for a thousand square, a thousand feet on either side of Route One. Very limited, no more than fifteen thousand square foot buildings. Requirements for large setbacks from the road. Requirements for a limited number of uses. And, uh, what the planning board looked at was a very simple fact that, and I refer to this map, you know, this is the proposed official way to use. Planning board was looking at some very hard realities when we were looking at what to do with this particular district. The hard reality is we have very large areas in this town that have been currently zoned for business. We have this large dark area here. You see, this is existing, this is BI, the Business Office and Industrial District. Stems from the Bedford Town Line, pretty much almost to Log Cabin. About fifteen, a little bit more, about, oh, eighteen hundred square, uh, eighteen hundred linear feet from, from Campground and Log Cabin Road, which is right here. It's a very large, it's the largest, uh, business district we have in town. The problem is, as you all know, it's basically covering the mountain. What we call the mountain. All the area to the west of it is ledge and relatively steep slopes, very shallow bedrock and filled with rental pools. And the area that's east of it is wetlands. So it's about the most uninhabitable business zone that we've got. We have businesses there, but look at what we've got there. We've got small-scale stuff in there, things that can exist on small hummets and parcels of land. Uh, we've, we've had several business. Luckily, a rumble machine was able to get in there and produce their facility. But most of the lands in there are just not suitable for the kind of uses that were programmed for this. This is, this is supposed to be our business office industrial park here. This is what's supposed to be generating the revenue for the town and taking the, the heat off the residential property taxes. So the problem is it's not really working and it hasn't really worked. It's been in existence for seven years. There's been very little pressure out there. We've had a couple of divisions. We have a division which nothing's happened on, a subdivision that's nothing happened on. And the reality is, we had number, I've entertained a number of, uh, business investors, even those from Canada, who are looking at the land. This is very attractive to see this when you're, when you're shopping around. But when they look at the soils map or they go out and walk the site, they see the slopes, they see the wedge, and they start calculating the costs and they realize that this is just not cost-effective to develop anything large on. So we've got a problem. We've got our largest business district that we're holding, that we're pinning our hopes on, is not very successful because of site constraints. Nothing that town's done, nothing anybody else at a property owner's done. It's the site constraints. So we look and say, where can we, where can we start absorbing some of this, this demand that we're either going to generate or hope to capture in the future? Because the BI district just is, is really tough enough to crack. And so we looked at the soils and we looked at conditions down below the Campground, Log Cabin intersection. And we found a lot of area in the R two, that's currently in the R two district down here, that's backlot land, land that's in the back of, uh, properties that actually have their frontage on Old Post Road and pose a rather extensive expense to properties, uh, to property owners who might want to develop a residential, who are going to have to pump in a half mile, a mile road and, uh, in order to develop that backland. The planning board looked at, looked at access points and decided that, that what the opportunity existed, given the development area, the development characteristics in that area, that some of those backlands could be used, in fact, for picking up some of that commercial demand we want to pick up that we can't, and we're having difficulty doing with the BI district. So, um, basically, the DB one and DB two are married together. Their intention is to serve two purposes. One, the DB one is to meet that requirement. That was requested by the, the, the citizens in the comp plan and in the, uh, the citizen survey to have that downtown, smaller scale along Route One and then open up the land behind it for larger, more intensive development. Providing those property owners with some more opportunities to use their land and at the same time, providing, uh, making us a little more competitive in the business market to attract other uses besides the small fifteen thousand square feet that buildings that were restricted to right now. So what the planning board did is they kept with what the town was looking at in the original comp plan. That's DB one. And then, again, as I said, the larger stuff behind it in DB two. And then there would be an interaction between the two. And they formed two different districts with different standards, but, um, one major business zone. The intent is, uh, quite frankly, the soils in there aren't that much greater. Well, they're much better than they are in BI, but there's still a lot of site constraints out there. And therefore, we're grappling with that. And we're also grappling with the issue that the town still has in its comp plan and will be discussed, uh, regarding the TIP district. A proposal and a desire to proceed with building sewer up through this district and setting it from Kennebunk in order to help fuel, um, development in this particular area. So, um, that is something that is in our comp plan, was in two thousand and seven, has been reinforced by the comp plan committee. And I should say, and I did not give the comp plan committee their kudos and their credit. They did review these districts, the townhouse corner district, and two other districts that we just, the planning board hasn't gotten to, which is the Alfred Road District, uh, which is known as the CCM, extending that down to the power lines. And also a gateway district up here at the top of, uh, the Business Industrial District. We have a little, little enclave there of smaller uses, um, that really aren't really well-suited for business industrial that really are better suited for a small neighborhood commercial district. And, uh, the planning board will be working on that. Has, has lesser standards than the BI does. But that's the context of why we have these two districts and why they're arranged the way they do. The DB one district tries to follow property lines where it can. Instead of having a thousand feet back from the road, we're trying to find, follow property lines. And in places where there's larger lots, where it can't follow the property lines, it goes approximately three hundred and fifty feet into that property. And the DB two districts, the corner, the, the edges of those are defined, where possible, by property lines and, or maintain the same kind of, uh, trajectory as those property lines. You can see in the back here. It basically goes in a straight line this way and these all follow existing property lines in the back here. Uh, the DB one, the first one, that's the one closest to the road. In, in its analysis, the planning board also determined that one of the things that was happening was that we want to create this more intimate kind of environment and yet we're wasting all this land in setbacks. Right now, the setback's fifty, fifty feet. Fifty feet back from the sixty-six foot right of way. Then you add parking in front of it, which is, let's say you do double-rudder, that's sixty feet. So we're talking about businesses that are over a hundred, a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty feet away from the road, which is a lot of wasted land. So the planning board has basically taken a radical idea of allowing those businesses to locate much closer to the road, twenty-five foot setback from the right of way. And also to, uh, essentially that does two things. Number one is it brings the business much closer to the front, makes it much more visible, and at the same time, also allows you to maximize more of the land area than it currently, currently does with fifty-foot setbacks and twenty-five-foot setbacks. So they've done another thing. They've kept the, the lot sizes the same, reduced setbacks to maximize the lot. And I just lost my connection. Okay? Perfect. There we go. Okay. And to show you, you can all see it on here. The uses that are a lot, that are, are. The uses that are a lot, that are proposed in this district are all listed here. And one of the most important things that the comp plan committee reaffirmed, in fact, they asked us to do this for every, every district, but we're doing it, we started off in the DB1 district. One of the key things is that, as you recall, when we started, everything in the town was a conditional use, except for residential, every single business was a conditional use. Planning board changed that as an interim measure and made it permitted and conditional uses. So we've made some big strides there. But one of the concerns we always have is our businesses, who have been loyal to this town and who have stuck with this town for so long and provided services and paid their taxes and supported really and all of us that, those businesses that might be changed or might be affected by changing the zoning here should not pay a penalty. So the first, the first legally permitted use of this district is all legally existing businesses and associated structures operating as of June 11th, 2014. So regardless of this list, whatever business exists at the time of this passage is a permitted use. So there are not grandfathered uses in this district. So we want to make sure that's known. Same thing with residences.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
All legally existing businesses and associated structures operating in the DB1 district as of June 11th, 2014 is a permitted use.
So that means they are grandfathered?
It means that they, they will always be a, that use right there in that location is a permitted use for as long as it continues.
So does that mean they're grandfathered?
You could call it grandfathered, but it's important to make the distinction. Because grandfathered means something different to a bank, or it means something in land use, or us too. Grandfathered means that you're not a permitted use. Grandfathered means that your use that existed, we've changed the zoning, and now you're no, somebody else like you can't come in. It, this basically says that your use is not grandfathered, it's permitted. It's not conditional, it's not legally non-conforming, it is a conforming legal use as of this date.
Basically, if you sell my business and somebody could continue the same.
Absolutely.
But if it's grandfathered, they may not be able to.
Grandfathered, they could, but if you discontinued it, they couldn't.
Okay.
Okay? So that's what makes this very kind of special, drives the lawyers nuts, but it kind of makes it special. Same thing with residences, because this district does put some restrictions on residences. The reason why, look at the, look at the amount of area we're talking about. The DB1 is a smaller area compared to the rest of the town. And this is pretty much all residential here and residential down here. Kind of way, if we designate a business district and we're going to invest money, especially if we're going to put soil in it, we're going to want to try to reserve it as much as possible for the use intended, which is commercial. However, there are people who live there, and there are people who had aspirations to have their kids, you know, buy up their property and give it to their kids. Well, we don't want to penalize them either. And that's why we said, first of all, all residences legally existing as if that they are, will never be considered to be non-conforming. We also have a provision in here for allowing development of, of single family homes in the district. But single family subdivisions, which was something that the comprehensive planning committee is definitely against, are prohibited. However, family divisions and incremental divisions would be permitted. The uses are extensive, they recognize a wide variety of uses. They allow also single family dwellings, any new single family dwellings, as long as it's secondary to a business. They also allow multifamily dwelling, dwellings can be allowed on any unit, except for the floor. Right. The uses are, as I said, are pretty extensive, lodging, museums, restaurants, takeouts, theaters, recording studios, recreational facilities, these are all things, many of these things are not permitted in the district now. Schools, service clubs, yard sales, we have conditional uses, automobile service stations, drive-through facilities, for obvious reasons, we have special conditional use for drive-through facilities. Doesn't specify what it has to be, it can be any kind of drive-through facility. And then we have our, our space in bulk is pretty much the same as it was before, one acre. We provide floor areas for upper level multi-story. So are we trying to encourage good people building higher than one story? Yeah, there's a reward, if you build multiple stories and you want to put residents on top, sure, you can do that, that's permitted use. Because it's always good to have people living in your business district because they help to maintain that business district, they provide service to the community, to the businesses. In keeping with the, one of the things that the board was looking at was, in their evaluation of the Route 1 corridor, they asked the question, we've had a number of different regulations over the years that have, that have really encouraged business to come in, and not a lot has happened in the Route 1 corridor. It has not exploded. One of the things they were looking at doing, and in concurrence with some of the requests from the comprehensive plan surveys, was to create a little bit of character. And character area, and if you recall, in a comprehensive plan right now, it requires design standards. It actually encourages the planning board to establish design standards to maintain that, that small town kind of look and feel and scale. So in compliance with the comp plan, we're doing that. However, the standards in here, and I've heard a lot of comments, and the planning board heard a lot of comments about the architectural standards. The architectural standards are basically fairly simple, they look like a lot, but they deal with such things as building heights, you know, they deal with roof lines. People have been upset about roof lines, roof lines, we're encouraging gable ended with a minimum roof pitch of a seven twelve. But then hip roofs and the ambrels are permitted in flat roof buildings are permitted as well, as long as there's a, there's a decorative cornice or parapet at the, at the top to break it off. Fenestration, make sure that we don't have fully glass buildings and we don't have blockhouses. Twenty-five to thirty-three percent, you know, glass on the building. So that means that we don't have something that's just all brick or all split faced, and yet at the same time is not just a complete glass building. Except it does provide for, it does exempt things like conservatories or sunrooms or anything like those, those are accepted. So in other words, you're not going to get those roof four ninety-five ribbon buildings. It's not really appropriate. I don't think that the council people want to really see that in that particular district.
Can you put a multi-story name?
More than one.
Okay, but how, how many more than one?
As many as you can fit in fifty feet.
Fifty feet vertical?
Fifty foot vertical is the max universal. So, I mean, you could have eight foot ceilings, or you could have ten foot ceilings, or you could have twelve foot ceilings in the buildings, all, it's up to you. So that's why we didn't specify the number, just the maximum height in that district. Facade materials, just about everything. We discourage, you know, CMUs, split faces, well, you know, aluminum siding is discouraged on the sidewalk side. Just basically trying to maintain the same kind of uniformity on T-111, trying to keep that on the other sides. Anything that you don't see from the, from the street, same thing with glass. Curtain wall construction is inappropriate. Let's say you can't convince the planning board that it's not essential. Metal skin structures, prefab metal buildings really aren't allowed unless they're hidden from the public view. So if you don't have them right on the street, behind the building, fine, but not right on the street. Again, the idea of image. Combination of materials, architectural details encourages architectural details. And then it has a standard for automobile service canopies, which provides for a pitched roof instead of the flat, the flat room. This is something you'll see Irving does all the time now.
In fact, multi-story, the figures that you were giving me, where are they on?
I'm sorry, you'll find that in Space and Bulk.
Eight two, eight one two, one one three.
Yep, in three. This is where we get all of the setbacks and all the requirements in here. That's, that's lighting. Whoa, whoops, I went too far, sorry. Yep, there it is, eight three, eight twenty-one, three.
Maximum principal building type.
Matt, I got a question?
Yeah, what does specifically discourage mean?
Unallowed, disallowed.
It's a late for me.
Thank God.
It doesn't say absolutely, positively, no, it just says, what else you got?
But, yeah. Specifically discourage.
Mike.
Why?
Um, just because. Why?
Yeah.
You're referring to which item?
Vinyl.
Yep, it's sorry, yeah, I see it. Think the planning board was just basically trying to push people to look at something besides vinyl siding if possible, and certainly better than T-111.
I still am confused as to why. I mean, here, I mean, if you want to house season around, this is what a nice vinyl, all composite vinyl building looks like. You got the right builder, I know one of you. I just don't know why you restrict something like that. And I can't even tell if it is restricted, because specifically discouraged.
It's not shell, it's, it's just, it's not a shell, no. It's not a shell, it's basically.
All vinyl and composite, it hasn't been touched in ten years, it's beautiful.
Well, the planning board certainly could consider that, under this, under the terms of this, the planning board could consider that.
Again, I think it's just one of those things where you're trying to encourage business and you're giving them more restrictions, that's absolutely necessary, that's not encouraging at all.
That's it, you know, why put it in here?
On the material, this building materials.
Eight twenty-one, four, three, E three.
Yes, Dan?
I don't think I said my name before, but I'm being good boys. I think the intent of this is, the reason that it strongly discourages is because some of those things you can make look really nice. And I think that's where the planning board, that's why they look at it and say, yeah, it looks good. For some of you that can remember a while back when VIP came in, VIP originally came in and had a building that stood out like a sore thumb. And we had nothing in the ordinance that said, no, you can't do that. And we had an uproar of neighbors come to us and say, hey, you know, can you change that and change that? And we got lucky because VIP worked with us and VIP said, yeah, all right, we'll change it. And whether, you know, some of you may like the building, some of you may not like the building. The neighbors in the area were very happy with how it came out. So if this gives a latitude of a planning board that if somebody comes up and puts a, some vinyl siding or brick material, whatever it is, that doesn't look good, it gives them the ability to say, can you work with something else, can you come up with something else? It doesn't just specifically limit it, but it gives an opportunity to maybe work a little bit more with the planning board. In VIP, we got lucky, the developer could have come in and said, planning board, you have no grounds, I'm putting a brick building or a, or a stone, a brick building, and it's going to look like crap. But you know what, we can't force it, and we got lucky with that. So I think that's really what the intent of why that's there.
We might be trying just to remove specifically discouraged, if it's often negative, we might put in, as meets visual site conditions. Specifically discouraged is really negative, let's be positive folks.
Can I insert a change?
If I can make the lawyer believe that.
Any other comments, questions, yes?
Hey. Can I have a problem with Ted's presentation so far tonight? Can I have some copies to give to the board of what I'm going to speak about? And a few extra copies we'll try to pass out about why I think it's incorrect. And what I'm talking about is the eighteen hundred feet from the Log Cabin Road, Campground Road. In script, we have direct dimensions on where the B1 district is and where the CCS is, and the HC before that, HC1 and HC2, these have never been changed, they're currently in the book. Matter of fact, later, at the meeting, they tried to change that. And when we get into proposed amendments, here, I wonder, Andrew, you saw this now? Thirteen one, thirteen three, and thirteen five. Is absolutely direct measurements for where the zone was. Somebody's changed it on the map, but the verbiage has not been changed. And therefore, my business now, they're trying to put it into B1 and B2, in a split mind now. They want to take land that I've owned for forty plus years and put it in the zone, I do not want to be in. So I'm asking you guys to please look this over and make the appropriate changes because I do not want my land in the B1 or the B2. I talked to Ted, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at this meeting that there had been some promises made to me by the board, and it was people that remembered it. At one time, I had a junkyard license, it was conditional, couldn't have junk cuss because I was in the tire recycling business. I asked them, they would make sure that that didn't go away, so if I wanted to do that again, I'd be able to. Never had any complaints about running a sloppy looking place, that I didn't do anything wrong, but I just don't want to be taken out of the zone, that I've been in for forty years, I put it into a new zone, so I don't want to be. If you look at the maps that I've provided, also you'll see the places that I marked off for the measurements. On the new map that they've currently given, it shows the Route 1 corridor, being B1, including all my land, they've taken the land that my house sits on, that I built a thousand feet off the road, so I would not be in commercial, and moved that into B1. They've taken the rest of my land, moved it into B2. They've taken my stepson's land, that was residential, and now moved that into B1. So that's, he bought extra ten acres from me so his kids could be there. And they said, tonight you could build, if you own the land? I don't think you could build on B1 and have a couple more houses on what is actually twelve acres of land. But before you could, I just am asking the board, please take me out of there, put me where I always was, into B1. The map should not supersede what's in writing. I talked to Ted earlier today, and he said that it had something to do with water. Well, I don't buy into that. If you look at the last page I provided, I drew a map of where the CCS is currently, where B1 is currently, and where the R2 was when we moved our houses there. We do not want to be in B1 or B2, and this should provide the information that I don't belong there. So I'm asking that that be taken care of, it be struck another there, I don't want to be in it, and I don't belong there. I don't want my business to be there, and so I'd like to see it taken out. And I'd like to see what you guys can do for me. I'll answer any questions you might have, I don't know what else to say at this moment, except that it's destroying the value of my land, and I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Diane?
Um, I think permitted uses. Now, where do banks fall?
Yeah, financial institutions.
Okay, so just call upon the financial institution?
Oh, commercial services, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Diane, it's commercial services. Yeah, my mistake, that's right, we got rid of financials because we already had banks in commercial services. So we took that out.
And deliveries? Do they call Rundle?
Aren't breweries in DB2?
Yes.
Okay. That's breweries are in DB2. That's a commercial brewer operation?
Well, I have to say, I'm not necessarily sure that I agree because a lot of the ones in Portland and a lot of the ones that are springing up in different areas are a much smaller operation. They're not a huge, I mean, you can have a really huge brewery and, yeah, they might belong in DB2. But if you wanted to open up some of the smaller ones that they have, like in Portland, I'm not necessarily sure that they're, they're gonna get the clientele that they're looking for in DB2.
Well, you're talking about a brew pub. That's different than a brewery. A brew pub would probably go under tavern anyways, by definition.
Okay, so they would allow, they would be allowed to have brewery, breweries, a pub? Okay, I'm just making sure.
No, why you ask these questions?
Well, we had this discussion and you told me it was gonna have a list of uses, so I figured I'd ask.
It's a good thing to ask.
Um, are there conditional uses?
I know, but you can't.
No, I just, actually, conditional uses are there, number one. Set a automobile service station provided at a setback distance of 1,000 feet is maintained from any other existing automobile field service station operation.
Yep. Basically, limit the number of gas stations on Route 1.
Why?
The board felt that they wanted to limit the number.
Seems to me the more gas stations you have, the more competition you have, the better it is for us as guys to price the gas. But, I mean, you don't limit any other businesses. Why would, why would you limit that?
That's just it.
You're signaling them out.
Yeah, the planning board would say they wanted to limit the number of gas stations.
Let market forces do that. Don't legislate it.
We are a really business friendly here. Under, under Massey, under 214 design standards.
Where are you?
I know why you're putting main village there. I still get a little concerned about it. Under number six, under roof lines, you want it to be anyway, New England style architecture. I think you might be able to reword, see roof lines without getting specific in how the building has to... We've had, we've had issues about New England style, or discussions about New England style architecture and having it in the plan. And it was stripping from the plan years ago for a very specific reason. Because now you're kind of, I understand you want it to look nice, but you can have it look nice and not dictate that it has to be on a particular style of architecture. That's all I'm trying to point out.
Well, I think the, the idea was just to help somebody with it, with a general idea. A 712 roof pitch isn't, is, isn't necessarily New England, uh, and Gambrel's aren't New England. So Gambrel is a, is actually a more of a minute length type of design that we've imported. But, you know, the idea was basically, look, we're trying to create a certain role image for the guy who's coming in. He gets an idea. Certainly, the planning board used that when you talked to VIP. Say, hey, we want you to look a little bit more like the surrounding buildings around here. Something that's a little bit more the scale of the surrounding buildings here. And so that's why it's in there. It doesn't require it. It's basically trying to give direction. That's all.
And under fact...
In fact, I should mention, our lawyers hate the fact that we don't use shall throughout this. Because shall means it dictates it. It's, the, the idea here is to basically give an idea of saying, look, this is, this is what we're trying to, to work with, and we're hoping you're gonna work with us. Gives the planning board more ammo to be able to command things, but at the same time, doesn't dictate exact architectural standards. Gives a lot of leeway. The idea is to give some leeway.
Under exterior materials, please reconsider the vinyl lining siding. I think that sends the wrong message and as someone who's just putting in a new house, I'm, I don't wish to be painting my house. I put vinyl for a reason. I picked something nice. Um, I think these days, if you're limiting vinyl, you're cutting out most spitey things because almost everything is vinyl today. The reason for it is that it's so easy to take care of. These business people don't want to be out there painting their buildings and doing all that stuff to their buildings. And if somebody wants to put in a nice vinyl siding, that's fine. I, I explored other sidings in my house and found that some of the ones that you, some of the ones that you discussed, the concrete, I looked at some of the other comparables to, to, to vinyl and found that you also have to do additional things to your house in order to be able to put up that kind of siding. And it's not cost-effective if you're trying to build something within a budget. Under lighting, D and E, the non-flashing and non-neon, was that because of impact to neighbors?
Yeah.
I didn't have, I was just curious as to why. I didn't know if it was because it was, it's under lighting to D and E. Was that because of impact to other businesses that you didn't want any flashing or rotating lights?
Flashing and rotating, yeah, that's pretty general. That's pretty standard. In fact, we even have that in our ordinance right now.
And drivers, and traffic.
I'm, I'm just asking a question. I'm not saying I have an issue with it, but if I'm supposed to vote on something, this is supposed to be a public hearing. I'm supposed to be able to add, so...
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, you know, is the purpose of this because you don't want to impact other houses, buildings, businesses?
There's two reasons. One is for that reason, but the other is also a distraction for drivers. Remember, this is occurring within the right of way. And right now, this is a standard we already have.
Okay.
And it's pretty standard in most sign ordinances just about everywhere.
Okay. Um, under sign shape, page seven, very first one, it says, this main body shall be this, and it says, mounted and attractive provides a distinctive peak, bimbo, or oval shape at the top.
Right.
Is this our current sign ordinance?
Nope.
Then why do we have to be so cookie cutter? Why can't we let... I mean, I understand you don't want to go willy-nilly, but you want everybody to have an oval shape at the top?
Or a peak or something. Basically, what goes in there is the most important part, and that is your street number. And that is for E9, that is for 911 purposes. So our guys who are going out on a rainy night in an engine know exactly where to look on these signs for the street address. We don't have local dispatch anymore. We have dispatch that's coming out of various places that don't know, a benefit that don't know our town. So they rely on these numbers. And we have a really bad record of putting numbers in our signs or on our buildings. And so one of the reasons we're doing that is to ensure that our guys know where to look every single time in every sign as to where they are when they go out on an emergency response.
Okay, so it's on top of the sign?
It's on top of the sign. Yeah.
Okay.
So that when they look, they're not looking at the middle, they're not looking at the bottom, they're not looking at the middle by just... But they know where to look every single time where that, where that, where the street number is. It's extremely helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Linda had a hand up.
Um, I, this might have been already, I just wanted to clarify, that legally existing business, so if a business is down and operating but they're non-conforming, they are now permitted use, even though they're non-conforming.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Yep.
Hey, Fritz, speaking about the Route 1 corridor. This has come up, I brought it up to the committee member many times about cookie cutter. When she mentioned cookie cutter, I brought it back to me. So guys, all the buildings look the same, but you want everything to just be so perfect on Route 1. I don't ever see that happening on Route 1. By putting such stringent standards, if, say, Pabellus wants to build here, and their building is built by, every one of their buildings looks exactly the same. Are you gonna say you gotta meet this standard or you can't come to town? Why are you doing that? Why are you doing that? And also, have you guys put a price on what it's gonna cost the new business to come here, to meet the standards you're throwing at them? They wonder why there's no growth around it? Just keep doing stuff like this and there'll never be any growth. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Alan Brock. I have 45 for S. Lane. Chad, you mentioned that divisional increments and family division is permitted. Where does it say on here for DB1? I see it for DB2 and number 35, but I don't see it in the DB1 portion. I might miss it, but...
All right, I don't see it right now. Any of the planning board members want to help me on that? Where did that go? Single-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings.
You know, it should probably go along with, you know, number 2, all legal residents. You know, that's how you kind of did it in number 35, DB2.
Let's see. What are we doing in here? That's why, let me just go, let me just check something.
Chad, on, in the DB2, number 35, we have a specific exemption or a specific exclusion for lots that are exempt from the subdivision of law.
All right. That was in DB2, yeah, but I thought we put it in DB1, too.
I don't, I don't think we did. I thought we could specifically exclude itself divisions in DB1.
But I'm gonna be an advocate for this. It should be in all zones. Because if somebody's got a piece of property that they're living on and figuring out to divide, they want to give it to a family member, the children, and so forth. Or if it's every five years, they didn't want to divide, they should have that right. We shouldn't take it away from them. Just because now you guys want to change all the zoning everywhere, and you want particular things in certain areas, which is great. But you shouldn't take away that property owner's rights, you know, if they, you know, want to do something like that. We want to give them incentives, those that, you know, to sell it for commercial, which is great. But, I mean, those should be the basic rights of any landowner. Let's pay the taxes, so, you know.
I think the concern is, I think the planning board kept it in the DB1, and I, if I mispoke, I apologize. I think the planning board may have kept it, um, just as single-family dwellings provided dwelling is secondary to business for any new expansions, I think, mainly because of the size of the district, it being a small business.
I understand that, but if somebody owns that property at this point, and they want to do that, they should have the right.
Well, yeah.
You know, and I...
That's a good argument. The question is...
I want to propose it to the board because I'm gonna be back to the planning board. Uh, because to me, this is a real sticking point. I mean, that, you know, because all this land was residential, final land at one time. So why take away one of the basic rights that were there and then divide it, land to their families? We shouldn't start now. Just because that's the attractive area for business, great. There's incentive because that plan's gonna be more valuable. So maybe I, you know, I won't give it to my daughters. I'll sell it and move it some other land. You know, because it's that, you know, but at least I have the, the choice. And it's not just me. I know I'm in DB1, but, you know, I think they should still have that right. And then, because right now in B1, they don't have that right. BI, excuse me. Um, and once again, going back to what Fritz was talking about, I'm, I'm a stepson, and I was supposed to be in the R1, but then when they drew the map, they put me in BI. So I've got to follow the law that is in BI. And I have seasonal homes down the side of me, and unless the sewer system does come in, their whole sewer system was supposed to be in my, basically backyard. Okay, so what, you know, I should still have that right to divide that lot up. You know, because when I built, the ordinance at the time was 1,000-foot back, commercial, and then beyond that was residential. It was an R2, so I had to break the law. Then it was supposed to be changed into the R1, so somehow my property got put in the BI. And I would like to see some kind of way that, you know, a citizen of Rundle can make amendments to that map through the planning board so that we could take care of problems like this. You know, you might think I'm all residential. I actually own a small business. So it's not that anti-business. We need it. We need it for our tax dollars for the, the town. But we should have those basic rights, you know. They should not be taken away. And then, you know, so I, I, I'll be back, you know, because I want to see this in all zones. And then the other thing is, I didn't see, we have like conditional uses. Where are the standards for the conditional uses?
Conditional use standards are in section eight or they're in section seven, depending on the type.
So they're specific to each business? I didn't see it.
Some are specific. Some are just basically the eight standards for a conditional use regarding nuisance issues. That's it. So the, the general standards are in the conditional use application.
But, you know, some of these, you know, might need, you know, extra, you know, you guys did pet daycare.
There might.
You know, but, you know, um, once again, as it is, I'm gonna have, you know, 250 or so homes, which is great for the town of Rundle, but they're gonna be all in my backyard. What's the saying?
We do have performance standards for those.
You, right. Well, what I'm saying is, um, you know, say, for campground.
We have performance standards for campgrounds.
But it's not listed in the stuff that you gave us today.
It's in the form, form, no, it isn't. It's in the ordinance. It's existing. Many of these performance standards are already existing in the ordinance. What I, what we're giving you today is not the whole ordinance. We've given you sections that are being amended. That's all.
Right, so you guys do have the standards.
Not for everything. For many things we do, but for every single thing.
We should have all the standards, and it should be, you know, so that people can see it before we end up voting on something.
But every the ordinance, there are sections.
You said not for all, not for all.
Well, we don't have specific for every single use. We have specific for certain kinds of uses that have certain issues. And then we have the, the eight standards that any conditional use must meet in terms of being a good neighbor, in terms of not generating excess noise, excess traffic problems, being a fire hazard. And now, the, the whole list, I can read it off to you. It's in section nine, seven of the ordinance. And any conditional use has to meet those particular standards. So they have to provide evidence to the planning board when they're being reviewed that they meet those standards. And some of these things, like movie theater, we don't have any specific real standards for movie theaters that we could think of outside of what the conditional use general standards would be for something like that. But there might be something for pet daycare. I think pet daycare would, would be a much more difficult one to deal with versus something like a medical facility, you know, or a, um, um, you know, any of these other ones. It's just not, or tavern, let's say. Taverns have their own.
All right, um, so I just thank you for clearing that up. Uh, the only thing is, I'd like a little maybe feedback from the board about the, uh, you know, the family increments and the division, you know, um, over, over time. And, um, I'd like to know what you guys view on that and where you might take it, or my process I'm gonna have to do to try to, you know, make it so that we do have the right. And, um, also, my point of, if somebody's in the zone that they were never intended to be in and really don't want to be in, you know, we should have some kind of due process to get out, and maybe there is. Maybe you guys are informed.
I think maybe I should address that quickly. Um, the, the, uh, the issue that, and I don't have math tech, so I'm gonna have to just keep it like this. The issue of these folks are talking about is actually, this is the official zoning map for the town of Rundle. This was passed in 2007, signed by the town clerk, and this is what was passed by the citizens at that time. It was passed based on what was drawn. What was drawn, and Mr. Fritz is right, what was drawn does not jive with the district. They're two different things. But the fact is, this, this is the map that's been here and been in existence and been used by the town for seven years, essentially. And, um, really, in a situation like this, what the map shows, we have several land use cases recently that essentially is stated by the law for it, that the map prevails over descriptions. And which is going to pose us a serious problem with shoreland zoning. And that will be an issue that we will have to deal with as a town because our shoreland zoning has the description that we, that, that the map is illustrative only and the... zoning has the description that we, that the map is illustrative only and the zone is determined by actual field conditions. So that's a problem, we're going to have to grapple with this town real soon because of these court cases. But the issue is that, Mr. Fritz is speaking, is it shows here on the map that he is, this is his property, he is in the CCS district. And Alan, this is your lot right here, right?
Yeah, I'm in the B one, yeah.
Yeah, and so they show them, and he's in the B one and Dick is in the CCS currently. Right now, frankly speaking, when we, when the planning board did this, we decided when we got to the end here, we weren't going to really change the district very much, stay with the same exact district and not move it. And so that's why this is pretty much, this terminates pretty much the same as that one. This has been circulated since then, that's why it's a little different, but it's the same, pretty much the same, same kind of dimension. So that's why we did this, it wasn't malicious intent, it was just following what was shown on the, the plan. Number two, we do have a way and a methodology of changing the zoning map. As this board knows, we've changed the zoning map a number of times for individuals to say that it is, that they are being impacted by the zoning ordinance or being impacted by the zoning map, the good process of doing it, so that does exist. And the planning board certainly is always ready to entertain any kind of request that citizens may, who's open. And the process is established very clearly in the zoning ordinance term right now. So I believe I've told folks that if you have a problem with the zoning ordinance and want to see a boundary change, bring the planning board. And the planning board's entertained, what, two, three in the last two years, three years? I think two. We had one, yeah, we've had two, where we had properties split by this, by our zoning tendency of trying to follow distances from roads instead of following property. And so we've given a leak in those situations. I think the planning board would be willing to consider that under any circumstance.
Just one quick note on that. When I, when that map came out, I went to the last planning board, the gentleman that was there before Ted, and I told him about the problem that was drawn incorrectly, and he said he would take care of it. So when I saw it not changing the verbiage, I thought it was taken care of. I never ran up to the town and actually asked to look at the map, I thought I didn't take care of it because the verbiage didn't mean, and that's why I didn't make an issue of it before now. Though I thought that I was still in the B one, I always thought I was the last business in B one. And when I found out that I was being changed on this one, that's when Ted told me what it was that way before. I said, "Well, the verbiage doesn't agree with what you're saying. The verbiage says that I am in B one. However, the map shows me not, and it was because of not being changed when it should have been." So that's why I'm requesting that it be taken care of.
Yeah, I just want to add something Mr. Fritz brought up earlier about the design standards. Now, John Law has dictated to us about how we, I'm not even sure if there was a design standards when we did that, but you guys are very accommodating, let us put, you know, our building. Now, that being said, we just didn't have to make those changes today, I mean, after this has been done, obviously, these design standards wouldn't allow for that building in there. What would have happened in that case? In other words, if we're due to do the renovations after this planning board change, after this planning board change, we wouldn't have been able to do it, but would we be such a poor property developer? Because we had no choice about that building whatsoever. DM required aluminum siding, glass front, and there was no getting on it.
That's a good hypothetical, I think there's enough flexibility in this ordinance where it would have allowed that, and plus you.
It would have allowed it?
I think it would have.
So basically, how this is written, if somebody came and said, "Someone's requiring us to build a certain way," would the planning board have allowed it?
I think the planning board has flexibility in this situation, we tried to put in that flexibility.
How is that written?
It doesn't say shall, that's how it's written. It doesn't say shall.
It says you're discouraged, but it doesn't say you have to do it that way.
So in those outlying circumstances, there's, I agree.
But what about the next guy who wants to come in and do a building just like first? You're not going to be, you're not going to allow that. If it doesn't meet the standards that you're setting forward, the next people coming in, you're going to lose opportunities to have good businesses come into town.
Again, Dick, it says shall, doesn't say will.
Or discourages.
Basically saying, "Look, this is what we're trying to shoot for," and it doesn't say you can't. And that's why I don't agree.
I have written quite a bit of this, and written a lot of the comments tonight, and given a lot of meetings, and I, you know, the planning board worked very, very hard on this, with the planner and other people and other groups. I just feel like all these restrictions about potential business people not wanting to do it, and I thought we were trying to replace them, I wanted to welcome them. And you've got to be a Philadelphia lawyer and an engineer and have firms working for you, you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars before you can put a little sales business up just on the legal and the technical, just to try to read these laws. And then you might not be able to get a builder to build a building who would gain land of this pitch roof or the set back, there's another thing called a setback, which I told you guys before, a place like mine that's set back quite a bit, they have a lot of parking in front on the sides, visible. If another person wanted to come in and put a restaurant or a bar or something like what I got down the street and have it on Route one, they wouldn't want to be right on the street with no parking because if they went by my place with a thousand cars parked there to the next place with two cars parked, they would say, "Well, we don't want to go to that place because that place is probably crappy," they've got to go back to that place with all the cars in front of it. And the way you have this written is too restrictive. I guess that's my two cents with that, I believe you guys worked very, very hard.
Well, I appreciate that. This does not say you cannot set your business back five hundred or a thousand feet. It says that if you want to, you can put it within twenty-five feet of the right of way. You can set it wherever you want, up to that twenty-five foot line or all the way back a thousand feet. We don't set. That's, that's a business decision, we're just allowing you to move closer to the road to get more visibility.
More.
Okay, didn't look at, but then you've got, you've got the signage and that's restrictive. I don't think you have anything with the signage like the speed lines. In other words, where I place is forty-five mile an hour speed line, I got a nice big sign. Somebody, my competition comes and moves down the street, they got the little small sign, it's not forty-five mile an hour readable sign, so people are just going to go right by it because they're not going to see the sun. And then you watch shrubbery in front of it that's going to be higher than the sun, higher, wider and thicker. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of things in here that are too restrictive to make it welcoming for people who want to come in. I'm talking about principle a lot about myself, I'm talking about principles where us getting people to come in there and build and lower everybody's taxes, you know, all the residents of Arundel, almost, property.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that the, the sign is, the maximum sign is forty square feet, which is bigger than a sheet of plywood. And then we also have something we didn't have before of allowing one square foot of signage per linear foot of building, so we can get even more signage than we have currently. So the bigger your building, the more signage you get. It's relative to the building, whereas before, it's just, this is the maximum you can get through. So we've, we've got several layers. Our post sign, which is the sign you're going to have out front, can be forty square feet, which is not a small sign, as I said, you know, it's a sheet of plywood.
Any other comments?
More than a sheet of plywood, I don't like that.
I'm going to set a new record instead of applying two hours.
We do this every Thursday night?
Section eight point two, architectural design standards. Downtown Business District one shall conform to the following design guidelines. Next paragraph, mass and scale, buildings shall be designed. So if you don't mean to use the word shall to cover all that follows.
I don't, it's only in certain places I'm using shall.
But you're using shall at the beginning and everything that follows falls under that first shall. What it does to this reader.
From a legal perspective, if it says something differently where it doesn't say shall, it doesn't necessarily commit the, where it doesn't say shall in other sections, it doesn't necessarily commit the, the standard to be applied in every single situation. You shall conform to this, that you have, you shall conform to various things, but one of the things is that you have flexibility on your facade, that we strongly suggest that you use this, but it doesn't say you shall use this.
All right, as long as, as long as that's what it means.
That's what it means.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm curious about a couple things. On the lettering of the signs, it doesn't specifically say vinyl cutout letters. I think some of the quality of the vinyl cutout letters is probably better than some of the professional tires probably on the street. I think that's one. Then on the sign, on the sign order, it's, you actually say that digital signage permitted in DB one, DB two district, but when we get to the sign outline here, it doesn't call out anything about digital messaging. It does restrict reader boards, as I saw.
I think there, I think digital reader boards are allowed in the DB one.
But it says, "No flashing or rotating signs on reader boards or string lighting shall be allowed."
That's, that's the general one.
No, that's, that's the DB one.
Reader boards rotating?
It says reader boards are not allowed.
Jim, where are you?
Sign to D.
Page twenty-one, two.
Page twenty-one, two, Dick.
I think in other communities, they actually restrict the temporary use of reader boards for forty-five days or something, if that was the intention. Like if you have a business company or something.
So Ted, go to eight, two, one, five. Eight, two, one, five. Right, and C, okay, go down to number two? Yeah. D. Yeah, I see that.
No flashing or rotating signs or reader boards or string light shall be.
The sign ordinance actually calls out digital messaging, which is a different definition than reader board.
Right.
It's just specific standards for the district.
Hey, Jim, were we here, were we here questioning?
Yeah.
Because this, the sign for the district where you're in is, is in this, it's not the normal sign district.
Right, I was looking at the, it's business district outline, it really doesn't call out digital messaging, like LED signs. In the sign ordinance, it says it's allowed in the DB one, DB two, but it doesn't reference it from the outline.
Nope.
DB two has the same thing under A.
Well, no, the, the sign ordinance references digital signage, and it just doesn't say it in the DB one.
It doesn't have the DB one, didn't we have digital signage at one point?
Yeah, it could have been. We, we did.
We did, and then it got deleted? What happened to it?
I don't think it got deleted.
Oh, we had a long discussion about it, went back and forth. I don't see it in here.
These things can be amended, too.
Apparently it's not amended. Thank you.
I guess the other one is just for consideration is the vinyl cutout letters, as opposed to, it's not in there.
Where are you?
Quality of the signs that are actually vinyl cutout are pretty good personally.
Where, where are you?
Actually, under signage, Jim.
Under material.
Lettering, under lettering, so it'd be four, B, under lettering, doesn't seem like it allows for vinyl cutout letters, it does pass, say attached and released, but I don't know what paths would mean, but.
Here are the mentions, okay.
It's on page seven, around the top, B.
I think they'll let it.
I think it would leave, attached and released. Yeah, attached and released would be the final application, okay? Basically, what we're trying to do is keep the spray paint, a spray paint sign. If you've seen those, I'm sure you have, we've had them here before, somebody gets, paints, just loads up a piece of plywood and then spray paints the sign. So that's what we're trying to avoid, that's why we say something distinct, a regular font. Okay, if you go to a sign maker and say, "I want to give you a sign," he's going to do it in Times New Roman or some recognized font in the, in the lettering industry. The objective was to avoid spray painting, so that's what we're trying to do, is try to ask for some sort of quality.
So attached and released are vinyl letters?
Yes. Well, they are, there's very little relief, but it's a relief, it's an applique. And some people actually buy block letters and use that as a big relief, too, so we were covering all bases on that. But yeah, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't eliminate them.
Seems easier to say it instead of.
Probably should, probably would, we're trying to cover.
I think we did that discussion, many of you hit the list of the kind of products that there is, metal, all of the metals, you know, it went on and on about that. It's only got a year trying to do it. So I can't, I don't think that we eliminated almost anything other than saying, signs should be professionally done for organization. I mean, that's, you know.
Pretty much, but you can't say professional, I mean, what's that standard?
Yeah.
So that's why we came up with all this, you know, additional description.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I don't need to use thirty-sixty-four Portland words. Can you go to our favorite topic, lighting?
Yeah.
Two point five, please, A, and define that last sentence for me, what that exactly means.
Two point five, where, lighting?
Seven point five, A.
Seven?
I'm working on it.
Back end of lighting.
Seven point five, lighting, A. Last time, when outdoor lighting installation is being modified, extended, right?
Okay, I'm.
He's in the lighting.
I'm in lighting.
Moving back to lighting, not in eight, I'm in seven point five.
Oh, seven point five. Oh, you're back in there.
Waiting for this question. Bentley had already touched on that.
Let me go to it and find it.
Yeah, it's a lighting.
I, I got it, I got it, yeah, I'm looking at this. Seven point five, there we go, okay. And you're saying at the very top?
The last sentence in that A. When outdoor lighting installation is being modified, extended, expanded, or added to, the entire lighting installation shall be subject. So that means all my outside lighting needs to be changed with the newest, is that correct? You said earlier, only the new, what are those being newly installed, because then the word, the entire new lighting installation shall be subject. Isn't that correct? Because that means really, if I had a big parking lot and I had lights in there with eight-foot poles, and now the ordinance says five-foot poles, I would have to change all my poles to five-foot poles, is that correct? No? Yes?
No, if you changed any of the lights down to five foot, you'd have to change them off.
It says here, it says. It says, being modified, extended, expanded, or added, the entire lighting installation shall be subject to the requirements of the section. If the requirements of the section say my poles have to be five feet, then all poles have to be five feet, correct?
No, because you, for lack of a better term, you would be grandfathered in.
Those are the things that are here.
It says that in, it says that in the ordinance.
It doesn't.
So maybe say it needs to say now.
But that's as is today.
That's the existing, no, we didn't write that, that's there.
So it's still, it's still wrong.
So what is it now, do I have to change?
Still an error.
Do I have to change, yes? So should it say new, the word new should be added?
This is why we wanted to get, rewrite all this, but we didn't get to it.
I touched on that earlier and I think that is correct.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because that could put you in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be, so you notice when that was amended?
Yeah, I saw that too.
Two thousand.
I just wanted to clarify because it's not really clear.
Well, if he doesn't do anything, he doesn't have to change, but if you make.
Well, he changes the light bulb.
If he changes something, he needs to look at.
Twenty-five poles and that, that all of them need to be shorter.
Only if you make them out of, you don't do anything.
Say you have two lights, you've got to change.
This is existing, this is what's happening. Change light bulbs.
No, not the bulb.
Not the bulb, but.
Oh, I mean, I mean the next thing.
Well, thanks for bringing that up. Come on, come on.
Any other comments on?
What I mean by, is that what I'm saying about?
I have one more question on A, on section A.
Eight and section?
Eight, two, one, four, design standards for new construction.
Eight, two, one, four.
Get that quite clear, very beginning of, okay, design standards, eight, two, one, four, right there. All proposed building renovations for new building construction. Is that for people that buy a place and rehab it, or is that for me as the existing business? If I, let's just say I want an overhead door, I want to change my overhead door into a new door. Do I have to come in and get a permit? Because that would be a building renovation, or is that only for new? Because up top it says for new construction and rehabilitation. So it's only for new construction?
It says renovation on it.
Well, on the, above it, it says for.
New construction.
Yeah, new construction, so in rehabilitation, which is not, if I'm already there and I want to change the overhead door, right?
Yeah.
I want to make sure that no. So it's basically for new construction or somebody redoing a building?
Redoing the whole building, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Are we done with DV1?
Yes.
All right, DV2? DV2 is the bigger district, that's the one, oh, jeez.
On our planning board, we need somebody running eleven o'clock. But yeah, we, we try to get off the building and add.
Well, we've been sitting here and you're obviously here at the Town House Corner. I'm just wondering what time you think you might get into that. Or do we have to come back another time?
We can't come back another time.
We'll be here until we finish the time.
Why don't you town hall? There's Town House Corner. DV2. DV2. DV2, as I said, was basically an extension of DV1. The intent was to, uh, is to make sure that we have, uh, why am I not able to get this? There it is. DV2. Um, this is the back, back portion of the lands, we're going into some residential lands. Um, and actually some areas that are in the CCS district. Uh, and there is, as you can see, a tremendous amount more of uses that are permitted. The same sort of thing about legal residences and existing, um, uh, businesses are, uh, considered to be legally conforming. There's a lot more uses in the district that currently permitted. Uh, everything from breweries and wineries, convention centers, church and parish halls, uh, even agriculture. We have campgrounds, uh, and es-conditional uses, age-restricted communities, campgrounds, congregant care facilities, convention centers, et cetera. You can see there's a lot of uses, space in bulk. Uh, we have also, um, again, this is an area that's restricted to residential, non-residential uses. You can see the, uh, the use, the minimum lot size is one acre. Maximum building footprint goes from fifteen thousand to one hundred thousand. Um, there's some real potential in the back there for some larger developments. And, uh, the one thing was that, that the comp planning committee, uh, really, uh, worked hard on was the issue of making sure that people could basically divide, people who had existing properties, since this is basically undeveloped areas or in sub-residential areas, that, that folks who had properties in that area who wanted to divide it in the future for their children or for, uh, investment purposes could do so with, uh, without, uh, any restriction. And those restrictions are basically, you can't subdivision in terms of normal subdivision, but anything that's exempt from subdivision ordinance is permitted. And that means you can divide it for your kids, you can divide it incrementally at one, every five years. Um, you can divide it for probate or divorce or anything like that, anything that's exempted from planning board subdivision. So the residential, uh, the residential, uh, rights are still retained for those people who want to do that, uh, for single-family residences, if they want to do congregant care facilities or age-restricted, uh, uh, facilities, there's actually a bonus to do those kind of things because those things actually are net, uh, tax benefits for the town. So there's actually a bonus for that. In addition, uh, we have, there's all, it's, we have density bonuses for those, uh, projects that are mixed-use projects, which means they are a mixture of commercial and residential. Residential is allowed if it's mixed in with commercial. And the more commercial, the lower the, the, the bigger the density bonus you get for, uh, having more commercial. So frankly speaking, it's meeting that need that the town has been asking for is to provide an incentive for people to, um, you know, do commercial and still do a mixed-use project in which they have a mixture of commercial and residential. So it encourages that, the more commercial, obviously the lower density, but the higher density that you get as a result. Um, signs are, there are no design standards in this district. Signage is. Uh, there's, let's see, there's, there's a little bit more signage on per square foot of building or linear foot of building. We had the same design standards for post signs with that requirement for the E nine-one-one address. Um, parking loading standards, uh, the parking is pretty much the same. What we do, we do, uh, talk about where feasible and justifiable, the planning board encourages reserving, uh, interior roads or basically, uh, encouraging connectivity between parking lots and connectivity between, uh, parallel roads if they ever develop. Uh, we also have Route One intersection standards, which are actually pretty much the same as they currently are. Um, lighting, the only thing I think we, you know, we've got what, yeah, sixty-five CRI on that, that's the same as the existing zoning. And then the, uh, the plant, the, uh, the parking lot, planting strips around the edge, we started planting strips. And that's, that's about it on, on parking. So what this does is this provides for a lot more businesses, a lot bigger facilities. It encourages mixed-use projects, it encourages, um, age-restricted communities and, uh, congregant care facilities, given that the, uh, the current, which are technically residential, but these are not resident, the age-restricted are residential, congregant care are considered medical facilities. And, uh, it provides some nice density bonuses for those. Those are always, uh, tend to be a very positive cash flow for the town in terms of taxes, good taxes. Uh, you also have a, another, uh, user mark or user group and, uh, little demand on services.
Any questions? Any questions, comments? Town House Corner?
Town House Corner. This was asked, the question was asked, and I'll say very quickly, where did this come from? Planning board initiated this, got a lot of support from the, the Economic Development Committee who ran with this. They did some, uh, um, a lot of community outreach to that Town House Corner area. Uh, Town House Corner is basically, uh, in the lower section of the town, uh, mainly along Log Cabin Road, but it's actually extends from Meadowbrook on Elrondo Road, goes up to Waynes and then turns the corner and continues up on the, obviously the Elrondo side of, uh, Log Cabin Road. What this is intended to do is restore what was historically a mixed-use district. This area historically, and it wasn't that long ago, I should say historically, it makes it sound like it was back in the eighteen hundreds, and it was, I mean, that's when it started in the eighteen hundreds. But up, up to, in recent history, this area had a mixture of commercial and residential uses in it and, uh, very important ones for the town and for adjacent Kennebunkport. It is the gateway to, uh, the back door to Ca, to, uh, Kennebunkport. It has also been a vibrant, uh, portion of the town and was the town center at one point. That's why it was called Town House Corner. We've named it historically after, after the name of the area that it is, uh, that is noted on old sandborne maps as. So this is a historic name. The object of this is to create, uh, community or neighborhood level commercial to permit, uh, uses that have existed and to promote new uses that can exist in this particular district. And they are, uh, rather extensive. At the same time, it's a concern to make sure that we, uh, also keep it at scale with the existing residences, since there's a lot of residences in that district. Uh, we have limits of retail to be five thousand square feet, limits of personal services to be three thousand square feet. And I believe low-impact manufacturing is limited to six thousand square feet. So, um, yeah, low-impact, uh, manufacturing is, is in there. Low-impact manufacturing is one of those definitions that was redefined to be six thousand square foot maximum.
Excuse me, you have the introduction, when you're talking about, uh, the, the intent of this district is to reestablish small-scale commercial and service center and create a new gateway to our community in context, in compatibility with existing businesses and residents both in Elrondo and across the street from Kenny Buckport. What businesses were you referring to that cross the street from Kenny Buckport?
Um, well. It's certainly not Brown.
Well, that's Bill, that's one.
That's what it is.
And then you can think of Garrett, uh, well, Garrett Pillsbury or whatever. That's the only two businesses that I can think of that are across the street from Kenny Buckport.
What is? Okay, that's right. And I think also the Berry Farm.
That's.
That's, yeah. So, um.
A what, a dairy farm?
Berry Farm.
Patton's.
Patton's.
Well, that's way down.
That's across the street. This is not across.
I know it's Kennebunkport, but I mean, the, the objective was to, to make it into, uh, to continue that, that small scale.
But what I'm saying is that across the street, now you would be standing, standing on the, um, Center Road or Log Cabin Road, across the street would be Kenny Buckport, it would not be Patton's down the street. Off the River Road.
Okay.
So that's, I was trying to get an understanding of what businesses you were referring to. The only business that I could think of that are matched to strip on Log Cabin Road was that ground.
Well, historically, there were a number of different businesses in, in that area. Including the Trolleys, as you know, the Trolleys were kept down here, as you, as you would know. And, um, and we have been in contact with Kennebunkport and talked to the planner and he actually attended, uh, one of our public hearings. And, uh, we discussed the, um, the potential and they are considering doing pretty much the same thing that we're doing right now. They want to develop that district, they want to take it up to the museum, uh, they want to take it farther than we do. And they're looking at some of the same, this, same, same uses that we're talking about right now. We're just ahead of them. So, uh, essentially, they'd be looking at, at, at mirroring some of the things we do. But I don't know how far along they've gotten, we're a lot farther along than they have. But they expressed an interest in doing something very similar. Because they recognize that it's a gateway into their community as well.
In doing all this planning, I'm sure there was tons of hours, and all of it. What consideration was given to residences, residences who do not want businesses beside them?
Well, I think that we had, we had two public hearings in which we invited every single residence in that, in the, in the district to, uh, come and express their opinions.
Uh, I'm sorry, I live on the Center Road. I, this is the first time I heard of anything was when I received the letter to about this meeting and my husband and I are here today because of that. And when he went up to the town hall and the paperwork, we didn't, we only received a very small piece part of what we received tonight at this meeting. So I was not aware of any other meetings about, that had, that, that this at all.
Well, I could check and see, but we, we had, I, I, we had a number of public hearings and we also had, um, Jen, you.
Yeah, Jen, Jen Burrows from Waynes Down the Corner. Um, we had several meetings, um, where people, we took the addresses along the roof area that we're discussing, invited people to attend. The problem that we're having down in the area and why Kenny Buckport is hoping to change their section is because we've dismissed nine that I know of, small businesses, not large, small businesses that want to be out of a home, out of a small area that would not affect the residential change of the area, and we have turned them down. I am right now in a mixed-use zone, old-fashioned, I'm Grant Buckler, which means I am legal to do nothing. I'm non-conforming and unconditioned. I can't do a thing down there. So this is why it's a major, um, point, I mean, money's coming into Kenny Buckport. Why not capitalize on that at a small scale level to make sure that our residents are able to keep their homes and, and do everything and capture some of that money before it hits Kenny Buckport? I mean, why allow Kenny Buckport to change their side of the road and take the business? I mean, how many years are we going to turn people away? For these small businesses, sure, Kenny Buckport, open up the other side, take the business again. So we invited the neighborhood to come down and voice their opinion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I did not get the invitation to that because I was right down the street from you.
Right.
We see here it's a light on at night, so I was unaware of any of those meetings. Or I would have shut it up, because I was up in the house and I was cold. So we're not aware of that.
I'm not sure where the cutoff was for the invitation book, but there was, like I said, two public hearings. We also handed out at, uh, I think it was in November of two thousand and twelve. We stood at the, the election booth and handed out, uh, information.
I vote at every election, I still didn't receive that.
I, we handed out, we made newsletters and we handed out newsletters stating that, you know, because we were trying, we were trying to get as many people as we could involved. We were trying to collect email addresses, huge, but you may mobilize everybody in town, collecting email addresses so we could notify people about what was, uh, what was, you know.
We have a lot of businesses down in that area right now. We have the Orange Range, which boasts the, uh, bicycle shops. We have these guys, we have, we have some of the landscaping, a bunch of builders, a lot of.
Well, maybe fashion, it's Sinclair's, it's, numerous amount of businesses that are in that area and they were all legal businesses up until, I think, two thousand and seven or five, when somebody decided they were going to turn that into residential. And for the, you know, majority, I shouldn't say majority, but there's a lot of businesses in that area. It shouldn't have, that made residential. It was just changed, you know, less than ten years ago.
The businesses that have gone into that area along Log Cabin Road. The businesses that have gone into that area along Log Cabin Road, there's one that's close to where we are that has stores, cars, I'm not sure what else, but it's next to, we used to be four miles in. They went to the town, and they got a permit to get a building, to do a business, but you folks haven't done that?
We can't.
You can't.
Why can't you?
Because it was changed to residential.
That's changed though, that.
Well, even this business has only been there for four years.
It was already existing, it was existing before.
Yes. There's a lot of businesses trying to go in, that's why.
Oh, D1 is another place. No, that's the next one.
An example of the place directly next to him, he could have made it tonight, he was in favor, which I probably shouldn't, you know, speak for him, but he has a small place, retail establishment was at one point underneath him, he has a small apartment above it, and basically the way that the ordinance is written now, because the retail business left, and we didn't put one back in within two years, now it's business, we can't do anything.
Any other comments?
The, you. My name's Richard Lovejoy, I have business on Ray's Log Cabin, Lovejoy Builders, I've been asked since 1980. I used to stop the business area at John Clough Lane. John Clough Lane has two commercial businesses in it, we've been there, I've been legal, illegal, legal, now I'm illegal. I like to keep that, I think that commercial could be legal.
Why was that cut off at that road? Instead of going further up?
Why was it done?
Yeah.
Seemed like a good place.
That's an interesting.
It's a legitimate answer. It seemed like a good location, we weren't sure how far up to go, I mean, we could go all the way, there was discussion about going even further, the planning board said this was a good place to stop.
John Clough was likely a good place to stop.
No, it was not.
There's two businesses.
It was good.
What does it take to change that?
Well, the planning board can consider extending it, certainly.
I think that's what the meetings are for, that's brought up and.
But I think we ended it there because we started getting into straight residential. I think that's what the real issue was, and we get beyond John Clough Lane, this next property right here is residential, and we just keep going up and everything's residential. So the objective was, we were trying to keep it in the area where we had mixed use.
Stop on the other side of it, it makes sense.
As long as it includes the lots that are on John Clough Lane. Are John Clough Lane going to be going in?
Well, it, what's proposed, what is shown in the blue, in the green-blue on this right now.
You have your arrow for John Clough Lane, that is the roadway?
Yeah, it is.
First lot, second lot, the third lot is mine.
This is a residence, this is a residence, and this is.
No, no, that's commercial.
What's there?
My loan pile.
It is, you're right. Drive down and see.
Yeah. Keep going.
When you said your private way, you didn't say it was going to be a loan pile, you told me it was going to be a working.
No, I did not. It's the right way to go.
Right, no, it's a loan pile.
That's not, that's not a business. It's not going to be there forever.
It's been there since 1980. The economic development committee had a degree.
The third lot in is mine, and then the one beyond it is Richard's as well.
Yep. We're.
What is on the first lot?
This is the, this, the road basically, it goes through here.
Okay.
And terminates right here. And that's Richard's lot right there.
That's my, that's my lot. Richard's is the one beyond.
Okay. I'm sorry, the numbers aren't on there, I'm just going by memory.
Five lot.
Well, this one right here is, is, is not developed, correct? Yeah, that's the one, that's the one that's off of, so this one isn't, but these, you're saying these two are?
This is my shop.
That's your shop.
That's mine.
Right. And that's your loan pile.
That's my loan pile.
What's in the front?
Residential, it's a residential, that's a residential. And that's why we stopped, because it was going all residential.
We didn't go back.
And we didn't get any commercial until we went back to.
Comes into my commercial.
I'm just saying, I think when you looked at the, I think, and didn't read out the local ownership, I can't see.
So you had an end question?
Yeah, I asked you if the Economic Development Committee had anything to do with where that stopped.
They had reviewed it, the planning board and the Economic Development Committee had decided that that was a logical location, actually the Economic Development Committee wanted to go to Route 1. I think that was the initial, wasn't it, ladies? And then, then we decided that was bite off.
All down Log Cabin Road.
Yeah, I was, that was decided, that was a little bit much to chill, to bite off the stuff. So they decided to start with this area because this is the area that historically has had the most number of mixed uses, and start here and see if we, if there was enough support in the future to go down, at least to the museum. Because Kennebunk is looking to go to Goose, Goose Rocks. Kennebunkport, sorry, is looking to go to Goose Rocks at this point. So, any other comments or questions?
I, I, I'm saying, couldn't really understand, you took out vinyl, but then you talk about paint and materials.
Their pictures are up there.
Huh? Why are we in my pictures? No, I couldn't, I didn't understand about the.
Yeah, it says metal, T111, and aluminum siding shall be prohibited.
Talk about, all right.
Yep, and that was in, that was within view up on the road. As I recall, that was one thing that the planning board decided to change, and they did, that it was, they said these design standards.
It's prohibited, and that's the word differently, it's not strongly discouraged.
No, that one's prohibited.
Why is it strongly discouraged, and why is, why is it prohibited? And I don't understand, it says, material should be limited to clapboard, shaped shingles, board, and baton of similar texture and color, excepting paint, that this is paintable material. So where is vinyl siding acceptable?
It's not prohibited. Seriously, it's not. Vinyl siding is not prohibited. Basically, this, and this is, this is in regards, this is basically dealing with anything that's visible from the street, as it says here, visible from the street, as we had discussed at that meeting.
Well, there was a.
That was the issue.
Wasn't my idea.
So that was all right.
No, no, I said, why would, I was just trying to be agreeable. I don't understand, though, if you could put something in there to make it so that the planning board will have the decision-making authority to say that, okay, that looks okay, we like it, let's do it, why can't you?
I think one of the reasons, Linda, was basically, this is, this is a mixed-use district, it's got a lot of residences, and the intent was to try to keep it, everything in keeping with residential scale, character, and materials of that district. And so basically, the businesses fit in with the residences as much as possible, and that's from the street.
Did you count the metal buildings down there?
From the street.
Just prohibit it is a strong word, like strongly discouraged much better.
Certainly.
If you can use it in the other districts, I don't know why you can't use it in this one.
This one's more sensitive.
Anything else on Townhouse Corner District? They signed a motion, they want to land, you saw the map, official zoning map.
Official zoning map, it's right there. Basically, it shows the DB1, DB2, and TCD districts. This is a close-up of the DB1, and we've seen the other one. And that's the, right there.
To the point of, to the point of earlier comment where the descriptions of the areas don't match the map, I mean, there's, there's no way that we can get through that if we were, Morning, right?
We can't, we can't remedy that situation with that BI district before, before town meet.
You can put it on the docket and work it for something in the.
Certainly, we can, yeah. I told Mr. Fritz, I have no problem with doing that, but I should, I said, I don't have a problem putting it on the docket, what, what can I mean? And it's up to the planning board, you know, how they want to deal with it, but yeah, I mean, I'd be, and also hearing about John Clough, who wrote it too, so, you know, and that's why we had these public hearings. Just wish we didn't, couldn't, wish we weren't restricted to do only this once a year.
So we can't, we can't make, make that change on the map now?
No. Not if you want to make town meet.
Why?
Because you don't have enough time to advertise by state statute in time. The selectmen have to advertise the warrant by, by what, the seven days prior to, and you cannot give them, you cannot make a modification to that map, or any real substantive change to the ordinance, without re-advertising it again.
And that's not a public.
And re-advertising and having a public hearing on the change. So if we went in and changed that right now and turned it into a BI, then, you know, we would have to have another public hearing on it, we had to advertise 13 days prior to, have it published twice, 13 days prior to, and that's not going to make it, because that means that's going, we're going to exceed the June 4th, which is the absolute drop-dead date that, that the selectmen have to publish this, and they're not going to wait till June 4th anyways. I believe you're going till Tuesday, you're going to set the warrants on Tuesday, is that correct?
It's coming in.
That's the plan, yeah. But we couldn't make it anyways, because you can't make your advertising.
So, okay, so we can't make a change to the map, can we make a change to some of the language?
No, not anything substantive.
Dramatically?
Dramatically, errors, you know, omissions, yeah, numbering, things like that, that can be done.
But like, that section that did not have the Townhouse Corner District, could we add that in, was it 7.5, I think?
Yeah, an omission like that probably could be added.
Okay.
Spelling, aquaculture, aquaculture to aquaculture, and that's actually from last year, that's an older. Yeah, things like that could be done. Changing, why do you know, that's substantive, that's substantive. We'd have to have another public hearing on that. Changing the map, we'd have to have a public hearing.
Larry's got a question?
Yes, Morning.
Yeah. Fact is, written description, okay, under legal, legal terms or anything else, a written description on a check is better than if you turn it out, write a picture of it. So I mean, you have a written description right here.
Right.
Just because it's boo-boo there, somebody couldn't draw a line, I mean, it's, it's a written description.
Understood.
Here it is, and it's been there longer than.
Seven years.
Yeah. So why, what is, I don't understand the big issue.
Well, look at it, two issues. I mean, number one is, we're not here discussing the BI district, we're discussing the DB1 district, as it's shown right here. Doesn't matter if, if Mr. Fritz were to be changed to BI right now, this, this overlays that with the new district of DB1. That's number one. These, these changes would still supersede any change that would go underneath. Second of all, very honestly, you know, we have a legal opinion that maps in the main Supreme Court has basically said, the map supersedes. Well, that's what they did in the Scoville decision, gentlemen, I don't know what else to tell you.
That's impossible.
It's not impossible, that's what happens. We have their store and zoning is now in jeopardy because we have our maps based on descriptions.
That's the correct decision, which should be challenged, no way to.
Well, Ben, John, you're free to take it to Supreme Court.
Got a survey or a written description that makes.
Nothing you have standing, and we don't have standing as a, as a planning board, but that's the law court, I can't press the law court. But we, if, if we want to change that right now, which I would have no problems doing, we won't be able to take this, this to town meet.
Where's the survey?
Survey?
Survey, yeah, survey. Okay, you got written description, okay, if you follow by the law.
Perhaps we need to do this.
Right, right wrong or otherwise, the court said this.
This is actually something the board should discuss, we're, we're still in the public hearing, the board's deliberation should occur in the next section, you got to end the public hearing, you got to pick it up.
Okay, so we got through the zoning map, we got the district descriptions, section 13.1, 13.3, 13.5.
Yep. Which basically say, as shown on the map.
Any comments or questions?
That's exactly the paragraphs that I gave you. And if you eliminate them tonight, I don't know what you're going to do, but that's exactly the paragraph that says where my land is, and now you're trying to eliminate it, I have a problem with that. And it's still to this day in your board, this way.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I think we need to fix that, because I think it's inappropriate that we have disparity between the two.
Well, the reason I never went anywhere with this before was because every time I checked, it was still written the same way. I had no reason to think that it wasn't what I read. And you may have a map drawn somewhere that shows it now, but that's not what it says here.
The only, the only problem, Dick, is that this map was approved by the, by the townspeople at a, at a town meet, and so signed, it's the official zoning map of a rumble in 2007, that's the problem, and it was signed by the town clerk, and that makes it the official zoning map.
And that's, I brought it up at that meeting and said that it was incorrect then, too.
I, I wish I, I had been there, but I wasn't, it's before my time, and I.
No, you asked, you know, you asked me to just go along with this and then we'll change it later, well, that's what Nancy Pelosi said, sign it now and we'll change it later.
I understand the frustration that many Americans have about that stuff, but I don't think we can project it.
Well, it's the same thing, I've been told by the board they can make sure that, and not every member here now, because some of the news is still around, they said that they would not ever do that to me, and here we are, it is being done. And I just have a real problem with it, and I don't want to have to go to attorney, I don't want to spend that kind of money.
See, Dick, I understand your frustration, I'd be upset, my mistake was made, and I don't know how the mistake.
Where is the mistake? In the wording or in the map?
Who knows? There is a mistake, so all I'm saying is, is if you can give us the opportunity to fix it, we will, we'll work on it, and no guarantees, no promises.
That's not good enough, no guarantees.
There's nothing we can do right now, it's last minute, we start.
Dick, the solution is in the ordinance for you as to how to fix that, and how to come before this board and say, I want to change that zone.
I shouldn't have argued that.
I'm not, I'm not going to argue that point, you're absolutely correct, there's a mistake someplace, the only way to correct it is to come before the board and say, change it, fix it for me. It, it's not going to cost you anything to come to us and say, can you fix this for me? And, yeah, we'll fix it for you, but you got to come and do it.
It doesn't cost you anything.
Well, no, I, for his, I think it's just a matter of getting a couple of signatures. I, I think he's done that.
But it's, that's my petition, there's three ways to do it, one of them is just to come to the board.
And he's already done that.
The way that Appleton's already done.
Well, have you come to the board or did you go to the town center? I mean, this is public hearing, and this is an F, because I've been on this board a, a long time, and I remember a lot of discussion about. I remember a lot of discussion about it. Like, I, I don't remember there ever being this, because this is a huge mistake.
I understand it is, but when you read this...
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not... I think the board should computer corporate, isn't it? I mean, there's, there's anybody on this board that's not in the board. Fortunately, now in the town meeting, there's nothing we can do about it.
We were in a town meeting that night.
I'm talking about the...
But the people voted, the people voted on the map at that time.
Because, you know, why? Because the board said they would fix it. And they never fixed the map. That's why we were voting against it.
I just like running around in circles. And, and, you know, if somebody could assure me, fine. If you're going to sit down and say, "Well, I may not be able to..." That's not a good answer. I'm not, I'm not going to go with that. As much as I hate to start this whole process, I think that the mistake was made on the map and I think you guys should correct it. And if you don't, then I'm going to have to do what I have to do. I'm going to protect myself and my land. The verbiage is here, it's never changed. And I can't help it if you had a map somewhere stuck away that had something different. This is what was out there for everybody to read.
Dick, I advise you to not to bother hiring a lawyer or anything because I think your hearing that we're willing to, to work on it. We just can't do it right now. We can't fix it. We're not able, legally able to. So if you can give us a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll start working on it.
Then it's still going to have to go back before vote, so...
Well, still, oh!
There, yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, let's leave that to the board that can continue with the public hearing and act like they were here for a straight.
Hey, any other comments on the district descriptions? If not on public, public hearing?
There's one, okay. One question on the signs. Is there a maximum height of signs right now in the ordinance?
Yes.
What is it?
Depends on how far you are from the, uh, the area you're in.
What is that? What does it say?
15 feet.
High? If you are how many feet away?
If you are...
I'm trying to figure out how you come to an eight-foot maximum height. If I just think about my sign at the Mercedes, it's Route 1. Look at the snow pile in the winter, you wouldn't be seeing my sign at all. A maximum sign of eight feet, you go down with your sign. So on Route 1, that doesn't really work.
Well, you don't land it, uh...
Yeah, their sign's fair, but it's plowed in, you know, you see it. Well, it sits further off, yeah, but still. If you look at the pile at my place of snow, you wouldn't see the sign. My sign starts off at, I think, six feet high, goes up. My pile is six feet high. I don't have a lot of my head, okay, can you see my building?
No.
John J E A.
Is it A E?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering where the eight-feet maximum height...
There it was, basically because we, the, the board was pushing, board looked at the issue of pushing everything in.
I can see it, you know, in general, but if you look at the snow, sometimes on Route 1 on the banks when they fall, I mean, if you are, even if you're 20 feet off, you couldn't see the sign.
Snow pile frozen that part.
Yeah, I'm trying to do multitasking, not doing the job.
What, you want the height?
No, I want the page.
Page 88. Maximum sign size by type and district, 712 N.
Of course, it's further you go away from Route 1, then...
Higher you can go.
Yep. Can't be less than 15 feet from the right-of-way.
Yep.
Yeah. We don't have a, we've got rid of that maximum distance. It'd be right on the right-of-way for that. Uh, geez, I don't know. Do you see it?
It may not even be a maximum height.
We looked, I looked over and I couldn't find it.
It may not have been one.
It was, and I remember...
I thought there was one.
There was.
I'm not looking at the maximum height.
The maximum height was...
15 feet of that.
No, higher than that.
Yeah, mine is, look at my sign, I mean, it's... It's eight feet of height.
The max, the maximum height, I think, at one time or another, well, it was 25 feet.
Really?
Well...
Yeah, you know, what I'm saying is, eight-foot high maximum, if you are where I am, if you're low, if you consider the pile of snow that comes from Route 1, you know? Regardless, if you set it further in, then you, you still don't see it.
Yeah, but you're lucky, you still have a mound.
Right.
So you're up, you're up. You're up five feet.
The industry was protected, I mean, I could, I had to shovel off the, the tops to, to see, to get out of my driveway. You know, that's how I...
Can you see it? I went through this whole thing, we were talking earlier, I couldn't find it.
No, it's...
I don't think there was a maximum height in there.
I don't think so.
It's buried somewhere else.
Might be there.
Similar, but that was something different.
I don't see it.
Say maximum height.
I'm page 85, 712 A10. A post sign, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Only one post sign is permitted on lots with less than 500 feet of street foliage or that are under 10,000 square feet of lot area.
Yeah.
More than one post sign...
There it is, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
15 feet in height. Both signs are located in 15 and 20, cannot exceed 20 feet in height. Both signs are located on 25 feet, shall not exceed 25 feet.
25 feet.
So it's based on how far you are from the right-of-way. So the farther back you are...
So what's the closest to the road? Can be what, how high?
15 feet.
15 feet. That's about, because mine's, it's right on the edge.
Well, yeah, you, your sign technically has to be 15 feet back.
Yeah, mine is right where, you know, I'm right there.
15 feet from the left.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Is it, public hearing closed?
I just wanted to close that.
Yeah, I, I just have to ask a question. I understand Todd explained how, um, from TAB to Todd, the, uh, and then to the selectmen about all of this going on to Route 1. Obviously, there's a lot of concerns about DB1 to, and then this Town House corner. Um, I went to, what, I called me into planning board meetings, planning board meetings. Um, we go to all of them, but, I mean, I was under a question and I felt that you guys also believe that these should be settled off. When did that all change? Can somebody answer that?
Can, can I try to answer that?
Please.
There's an executive review of this, and I think Todd kind of explained it for me, too. Because I wasn't, I wasn't sure either. In his review and looking at, knowing some of the, the language, because some of these are interconnected, even though there are separate districts, um, as, as we can see, we have to go back and forth between the signs and that. If one thing were to pass or fail and another one passed that are interconnected, we wouldn't know what to do from, from this area either. So an executive decision was made.
Are there any more?
I, I believe the comments they entered, uh...
Planning board discussed it, at the greatest times.
Planning was a disgusting one of the ones, yeah, I think, uh, I don't remember that discussion.
We discussed that, we said, "For board, this is..." It was at the meeting, it was at the CEO's office.
It wasn't at the...
No, that was another time.
That was a long time ago. From the CEO's office.
It was.
And you, you weren't at the last two meetings.
Well, I understand all that, you know, but wouldn't it make more sense if we have three very controversial to know exactly why this is getting voted down?
I have a question. This isn't, this isn't something that just started a month ago. Matter of fact, the Town House district, we started almost two years ago. Knowing that two years ago that this was going to be a controversial decision. Even at that point, we stated from day one that I understand, I totally understand the way that things are breaking with lighting and all that, that they all mix together. However, too bad. I mean, and we knew it from the beginning, you know, it's going to be that way. We have to be in habit rate so that it has lighting. I'm sorry, it takes a little bit more work, I understand that. But, and I feel, and maybe I don't understand your work that it takes, Tab, but it's, there's no way that once this vote goes through that we will know which area of town that people are upset about or don't like. It just sends you back to square one of starting a hypothetical, "Let's throw this all together." And after being on a board for two years and giving my volunteer time, it's pretty frustrating. I mean, I know what you guys do, and we do, and it's like, you're not going to know which area of town.
I agree with you, but that's a decision that these two gentlemen here on the board of selectmen have to make. They have to decide whether it's going to be one article or four articles or how. I hope they decide it's a lot.
Right, it's going to be separate articles, but at this point, now we've left ourselves in a position, we don't have time to go back and rewrite it. I mean, we've known this from the beginning, well, from the beginning for a long time. We had time to have these as separate articles. We had time to do it right. And now we're just going to throw it all together, half-assedly, put one more, it's going to get thrown out and you guys are back to square one. And you put some serious time, serious time into this.
Dan? So, a couple of just questions here. So are you concerned about segregating the Town House Corner District from the others?
Offreem should be separated.
Well, I can't...
Well, I understand, I guess DB1 and DB2 because of boundaries, you probably can't.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at.
But as far as economic development, we can't tell, you know what I mean?
I understand that.
Right, the DB1 and DB2...
Look at the logistics of the map.
Right.
And, and I can understand that if we could, and I firmly believe that you can take the Town House Corner District and make that a separate article and make the DB1 and the DB2 a separate article. I don't see where, how we could split the DB1 and the DB2. What if the DB2 passes and DB1 doesn't, or vice versa? Now you've got, you've got such a destroyed ordinance that you're really going to screw this up.
But we could, I, I understand that.
It goes a lot deeper, and we're going to have to have, as a board, some discussion, too, after the public hearing is, is closed, to make some sort of recommendations on some of these things. Well, say the map passes and Town House Corner fails. Well, Town House Corner's on the map, the map prevails. There's a million little nuances in here that, that's both legal, that is both, that's planned or that, and that... So I, like I said, I didn't like the decision either, but the decision, same scope that made, so...
It's not set in stone yet, Tom.
Yeah, no. Well, one of the things that was said, we'll look at it and see if anything can kind of get out there.
The warrant can be worded, in my eyes, the warrant can be worded that if, that if the Town House Corner District fails and the map doesn't get updated with the Town House Corner District, I think, you know, I, I think it can be worded right so that if, that you catch it. The other two forget about it, but in my simple mind, I think it can be worded to allow that if it fails, it goes hand in hand, right? If, if the description, if Town House Corner District fails, then obviously you don't update the map. We don't want to get into a secret situation. We want to make sure that we, we cover our butts and don't get into that. You got to close the public hearing, you got to make a...
Okay, I, I officially close the public hearing.
We should get out of here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. You got to...
Jan is going to lock us all up.
You don't have to read.
Maybe when you see more hours more...
Well...
Now you have your next agenda. Gentlemen, we got to decide this, what you want to do. Swimming box means that, gentlemen.
The chairman.
Roger. It's the chairman. We need, we need some session.
Thank you. The public hearing is adjourned.
Does that mean we want to be able to speak if we decide, you know?
No, you can say it.
No, we can say it, but we can't speak.
No. Why not?
I don't know what that is.
Okay, I want to resort back to a regular meeting, gentlemen. And that is, proposed amendments to the, to this official zoning map. Now, Tab, you're going to give us a little guidance here. We can vote for, for the proposals, we can vote for...
So what you have is, you have options, you have several options right now, gentlemen, from what I can see. Even the comments you've gotten tonight, you have several options. One is to vote to move all of the proposed revisions to the board of selectmen for inclusion of the warrant. Leave it up to them to decide how they want to, how they want to structure that. You can vote to revert some of the proposed revisions to the, uh, uh, selectmen for inclusion of the warrant. Or you can vote to include none of the revisions to the, uh, to the selectmen, so...
We can vote not to send this to the board of selectmen as well, right?
You can vote not to select...
Not to anything. Yeah, you could say, "We're not ready, we're not going."
Can, can we vote to send it to the board of selectmen with a recommendation?
Absolutely.
What do you want to recommend, what change? That they, that they split this, which is into a couple of different sections.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you're going to do that, vote for that instead. And all these, uh, we're anxious that these people may rely on it. We make no changes to this.
We can't make those changes. I think the only change we can make is to recommend, take DB1, DB2 are treated as a separate ordinance. Take the Town House Corner District and treat it as a separate, a separate warrant article. We, we can't make any substantive changes to, to what we've done. Now, you know, I'll, I will be the first one to admit, I was not, if there was a meeting at the CEO's office that discussed whether or not this was going to be one ordinance or multiple ordinances, I wasn't there, I missed it completely. If I had been, I would have been opposed to having one ordinance. We put too much work into this to have it hang on what, on some little section of it, ticking off everybody in town and then walking away. My opinion.
But Rich, you know, let me, let me just tell you, you, the decision's not yours. That's the point. The point is, the decision's not yours, you can make a recommendation to the selectmen and give a good reason for it. But, you know, quite frankly, remember how interconnected this is. If one section with all the references to the performance standards and so forth, and they aren't repeated in each section, they refer to those performance standards, they refer to those definitions, they refer to those, those, uh, uh, standards or back to, to the, the general performance standards. Remember, when those, when that linkage is broke, you've got the same problem we have with the, with the district in this in the past. I mean, somebody's going to come in and say, "Well, landscaping refers to section 7-5 or 7-8," and there is no 7-8. Well, now what, what are you going to do? You know, that's, that's the problem. Now we're going to have dangling paracipsals all over the place. That's the way it is with the zoning ones. And, and if you look at how you've done it in the past, and, and I'm, I have no problems if you guys want to separate out, but just remember, there is, there's an impact for doing it. And in the past, when you've done major revisions, you've sent them as 101 and all. Because I've looked at them in, in the, uh, the town, the town course, uh... So when you had big things, you sent them as 1U because you couldn't connect, you couldn't disconnect them. You couldn't, you couldn't sell a car without the wiring harness, in other words. So, but leave that for selectmen, if you wish, with a recommendation. But do you want, let me ask you, I mean, maybe you should just go through the list here, uh, from item 1, 2, and 3, and 4. What do you want to, uh, what do you want to send to the, to the selectmen? Did you hear enough that you felt that it's not ready for prime time?
Yeah, I think so. Well, I think, if I, I think going to...
I'd recommend I go ahead.
Last second.
I would like the board to consider, at least, starting with the seasonal resorts. I think that stands on its own merits. We have no real negative comments on that. And I would propose, and I would make a motion that we forward that to the selectmen and recommend that it stand as a separate article, or a separate, yeah, separate one. Motion? I did make a motion, yeah. I'll second that.
Will we discuss on that? Okay, we're...
Brandon.
I got a... Go ahead. The company can't do this.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's a conflict between the definition of seasonal cottages and what you proposed. The definition calls for the cottages to be open from May to November. That's not a definition, you've got another section, so you've got a conflict between the definition of seasonal cottages and what's standard of different missions.
Is that the government?
Right, it's not, it's not in what...
Right, it's not, it's not in what we got.
I'll do something about that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. You know, it's in our regular ordinance. What I'm saying is that there's a conflict between the definition that's here, and the definition that's in our current. If this one passes, though, that would supersede this.
That's not a definition. Let's take the opposite section of the ordinance.
Oh.
So, you have a definition, fine. We have, we have. Add, add.
Well, I, I have a comment about, is, is this up for discussion?
Yes, it's up for discussion. Yeah, well, you got a motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm not in favor of making the change, simply because the town manager has said he's gonna contact the superintendent of schools to clarify whether or not they would even be eligible to go to school here. We don't know that yet. But you were saying that they will be, the town manager is saying he's gotta check with this one. If they will be, I'm not in favor of this.
So, if they, I'm just, I'm just, if there is, how many students you think are gonna hit the schools? Take a guess.
I have no idea.
Take a guess.
I, I understand where you're going, and I have no problem with that, but if we...
So, so we're gonna hold up, we're gonna hold up a business to come into this town because of something is, something like that?
Well, right now, we have, we have a conflict with the definition, so I, I think I need to hold it up anyway.
Maybe we can fix that, I, I don't know, I'm not sure if we can fix that, but... To sit, to go and say that you wanna strike that and not go on that for a business that wants to come in town, a business that is ready to rock and roll, because of 10, 15, 20, 30 students?
No, I, I'm willing to let them commit. I'm saying that we, that we hold it because we don't know what the town manager is gonna find out.
Unless that's changed.
And I know that, but what is the town manager gonna come back and tell us? It may be a moving point.
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
And Rich, we, we had that, essentially the crux of this discussion, a meeting a couple ago, when we decided to, based on the recommendation, attorney, Mr. Dan, with someone, that the provision of excluding, excluding schoolchildren from residing there may violate a civil right. So we, we struck, we agreed to strike that provision from the, the ordinance, and left it, left it more basic.
Yeah, that, that is, okay. Just for Robert's rules, we have a motion on the table, and, and we're in that phase. I'd like to add that I'm in favor of the motion to have that, but I'd like to have included that, you know, that this will be changed and that, uh, simply that the definition, the current definition will be changed to reflect that. And that ought to become an administrative, that ought to become one of the administrative things that you can do.
Can't be with all...
No, I think we, we added definitions tonight, as we've gotta go to this hearing all over again.
We did, but then I would have to go to the Board, Frank. There, I don't think we're adding definitions, it's just...
We're changing the definition.
Changing the definition.
I don't know, I would defer to, to, to an attorney, 'cause I don't know if we can do that.
That's a matter of opinion.
That's right.
Tom and I have had a matter of opinion.
Opposite sides all the time.
Right.
It's all a matter of those Supreme say.
It does seem like a real problem, because the definition absolutely has to match. It's a substantive change to the ordinance or to the article, so, and it's too late to make that, and it makes no sense to forward this. And I know there's a time constraint, so the only way out that I see is that we delay this and have a special public meeting after town meeting, because otherwise, we're gonna lose this whole opportunity.
Question, man, huh? If this is the origin saying, okay? This is the one of May 1st, am I looking at, am I looking at the wrong one?
No.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, it doesn't say anything about school kids in here.
That's right.
We're taking off.
So, no, the, the problem is that this, the dates here for the change don't match the dates in the current definition, and the new definition is not on the article. So, if, if this gets passed by town meeting, there will be a conflicting definition in the ordinance.
So, the definition here says the seasonal cottage unit may be occupied for a time period of about six months, between May 1st and October 30th, that's right.
So, we came back and changed that.
We didn't, no, we changed the definition, right.
You can't take this, gentlemen, to town meeting. It's not simple, you shouldn't discuss this anymore. It's, it can't, it can't go, this is gonna have to be a special town meeting or November validation. So, anyways.
Said there was a...
I, I, I was drawing it.
You were drawing it, so you were drawing it.
There's no reason.
Vote on it, vote on it, lay it down.
Vote it down. Okay, I'm voting in favor of saying this is the board selection that's written. It was opposed. Hold on. So, then? Okay, now what do we do about the rest of the DB1 and Town House Corner District?
I... The seasonal cottages created from Town House Corner.
Well, let me start with the district descriptions. And I hate to differ, but even the Supreme Court have made, but I will, and I don't think I'm differing with them. From time immemorial, maps have been based on descriptions. The description defines the map, the map is based on the description. And if there were, and I don't know the Supreme Court decision you're referring to, if there maybe was a discrepancy, and you couldn't quite tell what the description was saying, and the map clarified that, I can see where they could say the map has precedence, because a map is built on the description, and therefore would show the intent of the description at the time. However, all of that gets around to these descriptions, which to me aren't worth a damn. You can't tell where anything is without a map, and...
Wait.
That, you can't do it that way. You have to have a real description.
It is a description.
No, you have to have lot lines, you have to have reference points.
Well, I'll tell you, the, the issue that you...
Well, because if there's ever, if there is ever a question on that map, how are you possibly going to clarify it? That map is not a surveyor's map.
Nope, it isn't. And we've seen town maps.
Those descriptions are not surveyor's descriptions.
No, they are.
Those are guesses.
These are not, right.
No, they're based on that map.
That's what I'm saying.
They're historically inaccurate.
Yes. They're based on that map.
That's why the map...
Well, but they're, they're historically based upon existing points, existing lot lines.
They're guesses, gentlemen. They're, they're huge descriptions, they're guesses all the time, it's the best guess.
Yeah, but based upon...
That, that's why the maps are created.
What I'm saying, the description is based, you referenced an existing lot, an existing point on that lot, like a corner or a back line, and that references in turn a description that is a surveyor's description in many cases, not all cases, I know you deal with this a lot. But, in many cases, it does. What this, this just says, check the map.
Because we can't, the towns can't afford to have surveyor's descriptions, our custom supports.
If the map prevails.
We can't do that.
Let me, instead of having this long discussion then, let me just say that I'm not in favor of these descriptions. I don't think this is the right way to do it.
Well, that, that may be, but the planning board approved that to go with. Now, the planning, now, if you're saying, let's not do it, let's not send it, that's one thing. But the planning board did approve these descriptions as written. You don't wanna send it because you wanna revise that and get more defined, that's terrific, fine. But, it, we're, we, we can't change it, it's a question of whether you wanna take it to the, to the meeting or not.
Well, let me, let me continue by saying that during our public hearing, I kept tabs, and I have over 15 substantive changes that I feel need to be either looked at very closely, probably made, from the public comments we got. To me, that means that this is not ready for prime time. I would be, you know, as, as an educator, I would be embarrassed to present something like this. I would never present it to a class if you, if it's something full of errors. This is full of errors, full of problems, besides the fact that it will probably get voted down at town meeting. I would, even so, would be embarrassed to present a document that has that many problems. So, personally, I'm not in favor of forwarding this to the Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, can I make a motion?
Well, I, I'm waiting to hear the...
No, there was no motion.
You're finished, okay. I wanna make a motion that we do not forward this to the Board of Selectmen. Because John's right, there, there's other things that I've seen in here. We've got sections of this that we can't send them anywhere, we can't send them.
Right.
The, the seasonal cottages, which is part of it. So I would just, and we, you know, I'd like to say, let them have the Town House Corner District, but it's tied into everything else, the signs, the lighting, the parking, it's all tied together. So I, I, Tad's right, everybody else is. We sent, we sent this to them, it's going down in plan.
I have a second on that motion.
Wait, can you clarify for me, for your motion, what do you mean by this, the entire?
The entire thing.
The entire proposed land use or the amendments?
The entire land use ordinance.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have, have some on... I have a question that, that goes to, John, you're saying substantive changes. I think I probably have about 15 that I've underlined that I thought were very, very pointed, probably should require change. We're in the middle of a process, the way that I see it. And part of this process is to have the public comment on what we're presenting, and typically you have that opportunity to make changes. I'm not sure, because we're gonna change potentially something that's absolutely prohibited, that we're going to change that word to discourage. I don't think that's substantive. And I think by having that list of all of these little things that were brought before, for instance, even extending, extending the length, that should be extending the borders. That should, that, that's probably substantive, that changes the map, that changes our other things. But there's a whole bunch that people have said that I think make good sense. I think, I don't see them as substantive, I see it as part of the process, unless you have to mail it all out again, I, I'm lost, I guess. But I think the way to do it would be to go back through, look at the things, decide if they are substantive or not. What can we change, if we can? And if you're saying that nothing can be changed, we don't believe, um, then it's a different problem.
That's, that's the impression I've got from Tad, is that we can't change anything in here. And if we can't change anything, yeah, administrative things like you could put in the Town House Corner District into that section, but the change expressly prohibited to, shall be strongly discouraged, is a substantive change to me. There's a couple of things I'd like to see taken out completely, but...
As a resident, in defense of, of, uh... The process, normally you have a public hearing, like you had tonight. You guys take public comments, and then we make changes, right?
Thank you.
That's what the process normally is. What's happened here is, we waited last minute to have a public hearing, and there's no time to make the change. So, you know, as a resident, I would sit there and, and say, you know, why are you presenting? And the guy said it tonight, why are you presenting this now? If it's okay to make changes, then I'm cool with that, but if we can't make changes, you know, public hearing on this should have, and, and, you know, you guys have done a ton of work, so I'm not blaming you guys. I'm just saying that things have worked out, the public hearing is now, and, and we can't go any further. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that...
We had great chance of public hearing, this is the first time when the majority of these people, we have more people here tonight that have added all of...
Combined, combined.
But, but these are gonna be the same people that are gonna be going.
Exactly.
And, and that was my point, they're gonna be the same ones that are going.
Others, others who will...
Wait, one question at a time, please. Go ahead.
This is what I've been trying to tell the Board for the longest time. Instead of just being told, well, it published on the website or anything else, communication got out. I turn around, I, communication got out, people responded.
Communication's been out there all the time, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's why you had it tonight.
We've got a motion, and a second on the floor, any other discussion?
Well, is, can any changes be made? I, I guess that would be... What do you guys feel about the Town House Corner?
Well, if you take the input about John Puff Lane, that's one substantial change.
But we could do that at a different point, you know, I'm just afraid...
No, let's change the map, and that's gotta go to a public hearing, and then it's gotta recount meeting.
And, and if we're gonna bring seasonal cottages forward in, in a short amount of time, I mean, Dan's correct, the public hearing is intended for us to gather public comment and be able to make the requisite changes that we think are necessary or to, to have this pass and, and be, be intent of what we're, we in the comprehensive plan are trying to do.
All right, so you're saying that since it, it's likely that we're gonna have another town meeting, a special meeting in short order, we might as well do a good job.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the short order is.
Well, yeah, a special town meeting requires a lot, we just can't say we're having a special town meeting, so we gotta pay for it.
Just like...
It's a, it's a gubernatorial election in November. We could do this by written ballot, if we chose to. And that's only five months up.
Well, that'd be enough to set it down. I'm, I think the concern here is probably seasonal cottages, because, and it's a revenue generator for the town, because you're staying, you know, hang on or live that long, much longer, and it's...
Well, seasonal cottages isn't going anywhere unless the vote goes for the, the TIC district, so, you know, I wouldn't, this is secondary.
Okay, so, that'd be the case.
We can, we need to vote special time here. Yeah, but I, you know... Well, we do want the TIC district, I mean, of course, if we see it, we're gonna be a special time. That's true.
So, if these issues, all these issues can be addressed at the special town meeting?
Well, they could, absolutely. It would, it all depends what the Selectmen wanna call it, it's up to them. The Selectmen make the decision on when they're gonna have a public, a public site, and how it's gonna be, whether it's gonna be an election, or whether it's gonna be a town meeting. So, either way, the voters make the decision, we don't make a decision, the Selectmen don't make the decision, the voters make the decision.
Yeah, okay, so, um... So you made a motion, right? Want to repeat the motion, please?
The motion is to not send anything on the land use or revisions to the Selectmen.
And it was seconded by town. All in favor of that motion? Bob?
No, not even that, I'm not sending anything.
You're not in favor of that? Okay.
He's got four.
So, you're in favor of not sending, or you're in favor of sending?
I'm in favor of sending, I'm not in favor of not.
Okay, well, it was a six to one, six to one.
Mr. Chairman. Can we ask the Selectmen what they think they might want to have, that they're here, idea, just an idea. It's not very positive vote, it's an opinion.
Okay.
When can you get it to us?
I mean, you got...
It's, it's your work that you gotta do, right?
We've got, we've got...
Now, but we've had that before.
Okay, um, Mr. Clinton, what do you have, any other business?
None.
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad I got the second one.
Well, David, I hope you sell me, or give me some of your days.
I'll see you at the end.
Thank you. Thank you.